You could say it's three for every.
Three for, it's not one for every three, thirty-three? Is that the same thing?
Definitely, I mean.
Three.
So it's, oh, I mean.
Okay.
You see it?
I'll just.
Okay.
Welcome to the Board of Education's February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two work session meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Babb.
Please, please face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to recognize our mayor. Mayor Jacobs is out in the audience tonight. I don't know if we have any other elected officials here or not. And as public notice, the board met an executive session this afternoon at four thirty PM with members from the Knox County Law Department. Mr. Dupler, would you share information regarding executive sessions in the Open Meetings Act, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Executive session is a exception to the Open Meetings Act. It's not an opportunity for the board to deliberate at all. It's simply for a conversation between our law department and the board and to discuss litigation and, and a proposed litigation. And that is pursuant to Smith County Education versus Anderson and some other cases. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any requests to changes to this agenda? Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And so we do have a presentation from Knox County and Knoxville Knox County Planning tonight. And Mr. Oaks is that year, or Miss, or Mayor Jacobs? Mayor Jacobs, he's telling me this is.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Glenn Jacobs, Knox County Mayor, four hundred Main Street here in Knoxville, Tennessee. Knox County has not updated our comprehensive plan, actually it's our growth policy plan and general plan going on twenty years. This has caused a lot of issues just overall when we look at everything from land use to infrastructure. And currently, we have a growth policy plan, a general plan, and then sector plans. They're all kind of smaller versions of the plan above them. But in many cases, because of amendments made to the various plans, they don't align. And that's caused a lot of issues when we look at rezonings and those sort of things. So we've begun the process of developing a new comprehensive plan, which will also include master transportation plan and will also have a master parks plan as well. Schools are an important part of this and traditionally probably have not really been that involved in this conversation. So we're looking forward to having schools involved. Russ Oaks is on one of the committees as well as operate, I'm sorry, as well as infrastructure and facilities. Obviously, when we're looking at where we can have population growth, where we can sustain population growth and those sort of things, schools are an important part of that. So thank you for your input on that and we very much look forward to working with you all. We have here tonight Manny Benedict from my office, Jim Snowden, who is Senior Director of Knox County Engineering Public Works, Amy Brooks, who is Executive Director of Knox County, Knoxville Planning, as well as Jamie Green, who is with Planning Next, who is one of the consultants on this endeavor. We went through a procurement process for a consultant because obviously this takes a lot of bandwidth to put this together. Came up with Kimberly Horn as who won the bid for that. They are very well thought of in this space. We're excited about all of that. Of course, there's going to be lots of community input in this process as well. So again, we're just appreciative of schools being involved in this process. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Green from Planning Next to talk about how this process will go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. As the mayor said, my name is Jamie Green. I'm a principal with Planning Next. We're based in Columbus, Ohio, but work around the country helping communities shape their future, especially as it relates to how they're going to grow and develop in the future. So I, as the mayor said, I'm going to give you a brief overview about this process. And then if there are questions, we'll take those. He mentioned Kim Lee Horn. They're one of our partners in this work. In addition to Kim Lee Horn, we have Nintegrit Partners, which is an economic consultant. We believe strongly you shouldn't be making land use and development policy without understanding the underlying economics. We also have a group with us called Urban Three, and they look at the fiscal implications of how you're growing and developing. Not all development pays for itself, and so they're there to look at it with us as well. And then we have locally someone you may be familiar with, Cannon and Cannon, who are helping us with this effort. So we, the term comprehensive plan is used a lot differently. But for us and how we're working here with the planning staff is that it really is a blueprint for the future, how it's going to be laid out and described and goals and strategies. For us, those are projects, policies, and programs that are needed. It really is also a thought of as a compass, you know, how is this going to provide direction for decision-making on how money is allocated for capital improvements, for rezonings, operating budgets. But it should inform, you know, all of that other really important work if it's institutionalized in the county. We think about it also as a playbook, like once you figure out where you want to go and what you want to do, how do you go about securing funding and shaping policy to make that a reality? And then we also think that it's really important that there is an understanding, understanding by groups like yours about what the county is doing, what the vision is and how that's going, going to happen. Especially the private sector and development in that regard. Our experience is that in many places, what, what developers want most is predictability in what, what is being expected of them. And so this is an opportunity, as the mayor said, the first time in twenty years, to re-articulate what's really important in terms of, terms of that. So the key parts of this, the comprehensive plan, there are a lot of, you know, sub-elements. But I want you to think about, you know, land use being a critical one. You know, the choices that a community makes to serve it with utilities, it drives how you need to serve it with, with transportation. But it also drives the economics. And the, the transportation and mobility issues are likewise a critical agreement agreement because people are going to live here, going to move here, going to invest here. How do they get around? And how does that transportation make sense with the land use issues? There is a Parks and Recreation Plan. We know that that's really important to members of your community. That work is well underway right now, but it will be seamlessly integrated into the land use and transportation work. So, you know, you, you might, or you should wonder why the county is updating the plan now. Twenty years. In a lot of places, South Carolina, for example, you have to update your plan every ten years, create a new plan and it, and update it in the intervening five. Twenty is longer than, than most I think would do. So we think that it's, you know, well overdue. A generation since the last plan was there. And if you just pause for, you know, a couple of minutes and think about what has changed in Knox County in the last twenty years, it's a lot. So this is an effort to sort of bring that up to date. We think that, that the reason it's being done right now is because of the change that I just alluded to. The plan should be the basis for organizing and managing the change in a way that you want, not just being reactive to what's actually happening. The growth, we're going to be doing a good analysis, but intuitively you probably know that there's a lot of growth unprecedented here in the county that's happened. And I think also, you know, there's an opportunity here. It's very competitive out there to attract and retain talent in communities. It's very challenged to attract and retain good business investments. This planning process can be a tool and a step to actually having that happen. I think the other thing that's kind of related to some of these items up here like change is that there are some really strong phenomenon happening in our country around demographics, for instance, where people are choosing to live, some of that, you know, accelerated by the pandemic. Those changes, changes in retail, you know, what is actually happening about how people want to get their goods and services. There are things that are happening out there that will impact Knox County, and we want to use this updating process to address it. Okay, now this is a lot of text here for you, but what we're hoping to achieve with the staff, with stakeholders here in the community are a number of things. Economics being one of them. There's so much that is possible when there are good fundamental economics in your land use policies and choices. Resiliency. We want to make sure that decisions we're making also are considering what's happening in the natural environment. You have extraordinary natural environment in this county. We took a tour a couple of months ago and it's amazing what's out there. So how does you, how do you integrate that in a resilient way? Workforce advancement, clearly you want opportunities where people are here. You want people to go where there is talent. You know, it's really clear right now that businesses, you know, used to just locate where they were and expected people to come to them, even if it was in, you know, Dubuque, Iowa. Now it's just the opposite, where businesses go where they find talent. And so we want to work this plan and the quality of place around workforce advancement. Likewise, around affordability, you know, there isn't a market we work in right now that doesn't have housing and affordability challenges. This plan can be a way to do that. And ultimately prosperity, how do all these things, you know, sort of wind up in a place where it really yields a more efficient connected place and connects people, places, and prosperity? So this is a timeline about our process. You can see that back in November, we started getting organized. And we're now, we're working our way into some really important work. So there are three middle blocks up there about the content of the work, state of the county, like trying to understand what the conditions and the trends are. We're really clear that it's important to know what the conditions and trends are, but they're not your destiny. Know what they are, but develop plans and policies to sustain the ones you like or to bend the arc of some of those others. We're going to go into a process, once we've, you know, done that, to create some scenarios. What are the choices and the implications of different ways that you might grow? And then we'll move into the really important work of drafting recommendations. You'll see the three large components on the bottom are the rounds of engagement that we're going to facilitate. We believe strongly that the best plans are those that integrate not only the technical work that's up above, but the intuition that people have by virtue of living, working in a community. And so that will take us to a point where we'll have a final plan documenting the recommendations and going through the process of adoption. So who's involved? There are eight buckets that we think about here in terms of who's involved. There is an advisory committee that's really close to being formed and launched, that's going to help guide the process and the substance and take a leadership role in committee engagement. There's a technical committee that is being organized, a group of stakeholders, some of which we're starting to interview tomorrow. And then there's the general public, which is providing us the basic input and feedback based on what they know about this, about this community. There are some subcommittees already around schools and utilities. The county planning and staff is really like the critical coordinator of all this effort. The elected officials that are really, they're going to get a briefing tomorrow. But also their role is to help monitor this process and then be in a position to adopt it when we're done. And then the consultants, we're really here for process leadership and expertise that we have. This is not our plan. In many ways, we're a facilitator of your opportunities and your values here. So we'll, we see ourselves working in that way. In terms of, you know, what's happening, we took this tour in December that I mentioned. There's a report being prepared right now that you might, you might have some interest in, but it's about the state of the county where we're looking across a number of critical topics and trying to identify where you are today. What's the starting point from moving forward? There was branding work initiated and finalized, and you'll see that in the, really in the heart of the communications plan and the logo that's there. And then the website and engagement kickoff. So we're, we're working on the tools necessary to give anybody who cares about the future of Knox County the chance to participate in this effort. And you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, a very simple statement that we've, you know, that really tries to capture what we're up to here with this effort. So I mentioned a couple of slides ago that there are really three critical parts of this engagement. There's the listening and learning, which for us is about generating ideas. It's not taking out like our ideas or the staff's ideas and say, "Don't you like this?" It's actually going out to them and finding out what's important to them that we can then build on when we start developing goals and choosing potential directions, which is the core of the second round about making choices. And then that third round is, you know, it's iterative, so they're all building on each other. So affirming and prioritizing what happens is that last round with the public before we put, you know, the final document together. So in terms of listening and learning, there are conversations that have, you know, started and they're continuing, you know, today and tomorrow with the stakeholder interviews and the technical advisory committee, technical committee and the advisory committee together. And then in March, there will be the countywide engagement for us. And I want you to think about like the engagement, it's just not like a one-shot deal, like come tonight and tell us and we're done. It's multiple in-person meetings and then the ability to participate online and then the ability to take what we call a meeting in a box and go out to where people are. We do exit questionnaires after our meetings and we learn who's there and who's not. And we then try to go, go find them where they are. So I want to thank you again. I'd like everybody here tonight to feel some responsibility to get involved in Knox County, especially this active group on my left over here, the United Methodist Women's Group. We want them involved. We want everybody to get involved in this process and feel like they have a chance to shape the future of Knox County, the first chance they've had in 20 years. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And Ms. Bab, did you have a question?
Yes, when you're talking about these meetings in March, how does the public find out about them? Is there a website or is it the Knox County website?
Yeah, there will be a web presence for those particular meetings. There will be press releases, there will be flyers. So we've got a number of things in our marketing plan that are going to try to elevate, you know, the awareness. But our experience is that, you know, that, that helps create awareness, but it doesn't necessarily deliver people to a meeting. So we're actually identifying people, starting with the advisory group, who will use a word-of-mouth approach to invite people to come to the meetings. So we're going to, we're going to, there'll be, you know, a dozen different ways to learn about this.
And one other question I had, you were talking about like in South Carolina, they don't wait 20 years to do this. Will that be part of this process, deciding if we need to do it more often or putting a process in to do this more often?
Yeah, I think that is not only a great question, it's a, it's a great recommendation for us. You know, we're, we're not there, but when we get to that last part of the plan where we think, okay, so this is what we want to do, then there is important questions about how are we going to manage this? And one of our basic, you know, management pieces is to do an annual report, not an annual report of the county, but an annual report of the plan. And in that annual report, you track progress about how we're doing. But I think it's, it's really reasonable that you would also put something there that says, "This plan should be evaluated for an update every 10 years," whatever that is. But I think, I think there should be an expectation that you formalize how you want to do that. It's good, it's good stewardship. It's not anything onerous. It's just what I think you should do. Some of you, well, you must have your own plans, but be involved in organizations and businesses where you develop a plan and you live the plan and you update it as you need, but sooner as opposed to later.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mayor Jacobs mentioned the linkage with Knox County Schools and specifically Russ Oaks already serving on a committee. Do you anticipate other linkages with Knox County Schools in the planning process?
Yeah. So what we want to, we would love to know, you know, what your current projections are geographically, you know, dispersed across, where are you expecting growth? We'd like to compare notes on those things. We'd like to know what your general facility, you know, ambitions are. We, you know, when we were touring around, we saw several new facilities, I think, out there. We don't, we don't know. The staff might know, but we'd love to know like where, where those things are being positioned because they must be magnets for people, you know, want to live close to schools has been my experience. But I'd love, we'd love to be able to do that on a, I guess, a staff level.
So any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
For coming to share. Superintendent Thomas, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, a few updates for you this evening. I'd like to begin by pointing out that February is Black History Month. This is an important opportunity to celebrate the black educators who've achieved great things at KCS in the past and are doing outstanding work in the present. We also want to recognize and honor the achievements of our nation's black leaders who have served an important role throughout history. The diversity of our school communities is one of our strengths, and we will continue working to build a culture that celebrates diversity and ensures all our staff, students, and families that they feel supported and empowered to succeed. Also want to offer congratulations to the nearly 200 educators who are being honored this week as KCS Teachers of the Year. Tomorrow evening, we will hold a celebration dinner at the Knoxville Convention Center, where teachers from each school will be recognized along with district-wide winners for our elementary, middle, and high school grade bands. I've said many times that Knox County Schools has the best teachers of any district in the country, and I look forward to our celebration with them tomorrow evening. Finally, I want to let our community know that KCS will host two recruitment events in the coming weeks. Our virtual recruitment fair will take place on Saturday, February 26th, and an in-person recruitment fair will take place on Saturday, March 26th. For details, please visit knoxschools.org/recrute. And we will look forward to visiting with many outstanding candidates in these, in these sessions. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. And next we have our Priority High School Readiness Report. I think Dr. Reiswick is this you?
Thank you, Ms. Christie. I'm going to call Dr. Dexter Murphy and Dr. Keith Wilson up to do this presentation. They'll give you a little background on how we plan to update the board every month on kind of ESER progress in the four priorities. So they'll talk through that process as well as update you on one of those priorities tonight.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the board. My name is Dr. Dexter Murphy, former fifth-grade principal, former assistant principal, former principal, former NIT consultant, and now I'm back as a director of ESER program. So I'm glad to be back with Knox County Schools, serving in this capacity. Come to you this afternoon with our first of many monthly implementation and monitoring updates around our district priorities currently funded through ESER 3.0. Just first of all, because this is our first update, it's going to take a bit more time to kind of lay out the foundation of our implementation plan. So I just ask for, you know, your patience in the upcoming months. Once we lay out this plan today, it will be more brief and we'll have more brevity within our updates. So I just ask for your patience with that process. Okay, as you see here, we have our KCS vision for ESER funds. And if you look at that and read our vision here, there are several words or several phrases stick out to me. A is all students across all schools and also all student groups. But more importantly, ensuring that they thrive in grade level and post-graduation, which is what these funds are used for. Not just the funds, we're looking strategically how we can use these funds to make sure we're doing that in a sustainable manner as well. Okay, here you have, there we go, here you have, "KCS must first focus on the short-term and long-term response to student outcome and gaps." You know, we're in a unique situation and circumstance where as an educational system, we A have to ask ourselves, how do we tend to the fires, you know, the urgent needs developed over the past two years, while at the same time tending to the garden, which is the growth educationally and also the well-being of our students. So during this season of education, we have a dual responsibility with these ESER dollars and this opportunity with our priorities to first accelerate meeting the needs of our students, staff, and families. And second, use this fortunate opportunity to create sustainable strategies, systems, and structures in place to make sure that our students are successful in grade level and post-graduation. Okay, so I just want to touch base here, and it should be noted that everything within our ESER plan is built upon our student, our stakeholder feedback, excuse me. So a number of implementation considerations were highlighted during our stakeholder feedback on the plan. And the needs focused on A, frequent progress reports with data on impact and needed changes, B, equity across resources and programs, and C, ongoing stakeholder and community engagement. Okay, next here you're going to see our four, what we call big bucket priorities, which are one foundational academic skills. And it should be noted, within these priorities are our ESER plan priorities that was approved as well. So within priority one, foundational academic skills, we have ESER plan priority one and two. Within priority two, effective educators, we have ESER plan priority five and six. Within our priority three, post-high school readiness, which is what we're going to highlight tonight, we have our priority three. And within priority four, overcoming obstacles to learning, we have ESER priority four and seven. And the next slide here, I've created really shows, I want to create a graph here that shows you how our dollars are allocated across our priorities. And it should be noted that priority one, which is foundational academic skills, and priority four are bigger buckets because these will help us to overcome a lot of the obstacles that were impacted through COVID over the past two years as well. And also that note that, you know, this KCS has used a stakeholder engagement process to define the investment priorities for ESER 3.0. So as you look at that, you'll see very clearly that we've intentionally created the allocations here to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students due to, over the past two years, the circumstances. Also priority four, which talks about the social well-being and also facilities and structures as well. And I put this one together kind of like a fuel gauge here, which talks about the percentages of the ESER three allocation priorities. As you can see here very clearly that, again, 26.3% is allocated towards priority one, foundational academic skills, and also 27.2% is allocated towards overcoming obstacles to learning, not negating any of the other priorities. But this is based on our stakeholder feedback, understanding that this is where we need to, like I said earlier, tend to those fires, while we're also nurturing our students as well moving forward. Okay, so we're going to dive into our implementation plan that we've created since being on board here. Been a month on the job here, so we've been hit the ground running. So we've created a cross-office coordination of all priority areas. And the why behind it is to make sure we have coherence and alignment with, without redundancy. Also, we have created clear owners for each priority and strategy that's underneath each of the priorities, which you'll see here in a second. And the why behind it is to make sure we have clear lines of responsibility and accountability. Next, we have a thorough but flexible implementation plan. And it's, it's, the why behind it is to make sure we're forward-thinking and yet nimble. And I always like to use the word of agility, you know, understanding that this is our plan, but how can we monitor and adjust based on the needs that we have with our students and staff? All right, we also have internal monitoring routines and supports. And the why behind it is to make sure we have responsive deployment of resources and also regular reports of the board and community, sharing successes and telling our story. And within telling our story, yes, we want to talk about our successes, but also we want to be real and talk about any barriers or challenges that we may, you know, encounter with doing this work because it is a short timeline of making sure that we have everything in place by September, 2024. So along the way, each month, we will be telling our story, but also sharing any of the barriers that we may see coming up along the way as well. Okay, I'm sorry, there we go. All right, now we're getting into our implementation plan flow chart. So the following slide shows our implementation plan flow chart and how we created accountability systems, if you will, for implementing and improving our narrow set of priorities. So if we click through this, at the top, we have our overarching implementation plan that we've created. And within that plan, we have priority one, foundational academic skills, priority two, effective educators, priority three, post-high school readiness, and lastly, priority four, overcoming obstacles. And how we've developed each of our priorities is we have strategies anywhere between four to, got four to 10 strategies per priority. And those strategies are underneath each of those priorities. And the purpose of that is to guide the work and make sure we're touching base with those strategies on a weekly basis, right? And then underneath each of the strategies, we have specific action steps, anywhere between 10 to 20 action steps each strategy. For example, priority three we're sharing with tonight has 65 action steps. So it's a lot of action steps that we are monitoring and diagnosing on a daily basis and on a weekly basis as well. And the overarching goal is what? It is to make sure that we have party owners that are responsible for the priorities. Also, we have strategy owners that are responsible for those strategies and reporting out to us weekly. And lastly, we have action owners that make sure that the work is getting done, kind of like a checklist, to make sure we're hitting those marks as well. And the overarching why is to make sure we have student success in grade level and post-graduation. All right, so we're going to get into our measures of success flow chart. You know, we've worked really hard to create a continuous improvement cycle to measure our implementation success on a weekly basis, bi-weekly basis, and also monthly, reporting out with specific strategies as well. So if you look at this, we want to make sure that each of our priorities are aligned to our current strategic plan. So each of our priorities are aligned to our current strategic plan. And also within that, we want to make sure we have interim indicators of success. What that means is we want to make sure that we report out, be it monthly or quarterly, our indicators of success. How are we doing with each of the priorities and be very transparent with that, what's working, what's not working, and so forth. And how we're going to do that is each of our strategies have an implementation goal and an outcome goal. When you talk about implementation goal, you talk about what is the goal to get the work done? The outcome goal is always driven by students. How is this going to impact our students? Because this is the big why behind the work that we're doing. And each strategy has a specific target and timeline and goal as well. And also lastly, making sure again that it pushes what? To the student's success in grade level and post-graduation. And also, these measures of success allow us as a team, priority owners, myself, the strategy owners, action team, to work together to answer the questions of, I got two big questions of, A, are we doing what we plan, are we doing what we said we're going to do, and B, is it working? Or if it's not working, how do we monitor and adjust that on a weekly basis as well? Okay, so this slide I wanted to share with you guys talks about how we are monitoring and how that, how these meetings are set up and how we've created that whole process. and how that, how these meetings are set up and how we've created that whole process. If you look at the top there, there's a strategy, what we call a strategy calibration meeting. And those are weekly meetings, if you will, with where the priority owners meet with their strategy owners. And they talk about updates, norming of it, and on a one to through four criteria that we've created as well. How are we doing with timelines? Are there minor delays, major delays? What are the barriers or challenges to those delays and so forth? And then after that, we move towards our bi-weekly priority calibration meetings, which are led by myself and the priority owners, where we dig into what was brought forth from those strategy calibration meetings. And we dig a little deeper with that work as well. And then also, from there, we move into what we call our priority stock tech meeting. And that is, that involves myself, the lead priority owners, as well as the Knox County Schools executive team, where we share out our report that we're teeing up for to present to the public and you guys. And we talk about the successes and also we have time for discussion and dialogue around any barriers or challenges that we may see and how we can serve as a think tank, if you will, to make sure we're moving the needle in the right direction. And then lastly, we report out every four months on each priority to make sure we share that and be very transparent with the board and the community as well. So just to back up, each priority will kind of cycle through this whole process once, once every four months. So for today, our priority is priority three. Okay, so this is our board reporting schedule for the first four months, or what I call the first trimester. Okay, so today, we're going to talk about our post-high school readiness with Dr. Keith Wilson and myself. Next month, we're teeing up with foundational academic skills. In April, effective educators. May, overcoming obstacles to learning. And then we're back in the cycle again with post-high school readiness. So every four months, you will hear a clear and concise report and updates. And it will get more robust with actual data as we move along. But right, understanding right now, we're in the implementation phase and phase one, if you will, of that. Okay, and the why behind it is we want to make sure we have those monthly reports on implementing progress, like I said earlier, and also make sure the priority owner co-presents with myself to give that depth, breadth and continuity. And also, we have, we created a quantitative stoplight rating system, which is green, orange, yellow, red, a scale of one to four, that we kind of rate each strategy and action step and priority on and give each priority an overall status that you will see here in a second. And also, we have qualitative descriptions of the work as well that we receive from our strategy owners and action owners. Okay, all right, so for the purpose of segmenting our reporting into trimester reporting per year, we're going to focus specifically today on priority three, which is post-high school readiness for the month of February. So now I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Keith Wilson, who's our director of CTE programming, and he's our owner of priority three.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we're going to kind of jump right in. As Dexter said, this month, you get to hear from me about the priority around post-high school readiness. And some of you guys are familiar with this work already, having been involved with, we're going to start here with Strategy 3A and the Academy High School model. As Dexter mentioned, as we go through priority three and the different strategies that make that up, you know, we want to keep in mind how it aligns back to the strategic goals that we already have as a district. And so this particular strategy, when you think about post-high school readiness, really fits nicely into our district strategic plan where it talks about ready graduate. And when we think about ready graduate, there's multiple ways students can demonstrate their readiness for what comes after high school. And that's through different types of early post-secondary opportunities, ACT scores, all of that. And then in addition, they obviously have to graduate, right, before they can be a ready graduate. So when we think about those different metrics that fit into ready graduate and fit back into our district strategic plan, hopefully you'll see those connections back to what we're talking about with priority three here tonight and the different pieces that we're, that we're working through. So as I mentioned, for 3A, with the Academy High School, we're looking to develop a model. We've been through a process, really, that began last spring and has continued into this past fall semester and now into our, this spring semester, of working through the model for that. And so, again, where we are in terms of implementation, we've obviously had several schools that have been on board, been part of the planning process with us. And as Dexter mentioned, we've got some things that are going to be more implementation-related, like building the structures and systems that we're going to have to have in place to do this work. And then obviously, we've got some data, some metrics, outcomes that we'd like to see happen. And so for implementation, we've, we've kind of set the ground around next year for these seven schools that are participating in the lead cohort to establish their freshman academy. And in accordance with some minimum district requirements, we've given them around how to group your teachers, location, again, creating that small community, that freshman family of teachers and educators for the students, building in a freshman seminar for those ninth-grade students and ensuring that there's scheduled small learning community time for those teachers, where they're focusing in on, you know, the success of those kids and the experiences they're building out for them, as well as PLC time where we think about content supports and the types of things that our teachers are used to collaborating around in terms of content. And what do we hope to see with that? Well, we know, again, an important part of being a ready graduate is to be a graduate. And so we want to make sure that our students are earning credits on the, on the timeframe that we would expect them to see and staying on track to graduation. And so we're going to be looking to see, you know, are we seeing an impact on our freshmen and the number of credits earned? And using this spring 2022 as a baseline to see, again, how many freshmen are exiting that freshman year with fewer than six credits. We're hoping to see that be an impacted number. As Dexter mentioned already, we kind of, as looking through these strategies, are going to provide ourselves with a qualitative ranking of red to green. And that, what that basically means is are we on track with our strategy, right? When we think about the steps that we've already begun, and there will be some steps that we haven't begun, obviously, because we received this rather large grant in November. So we're really getting our feet underneath us right now with some of this work. But with the steps within the action plan that we've started, if we find that those are on track, then we've got some different levels that we attribute our ranking to. So for example, if you, if 80% of your steps are on track that you started, then that would be a green ranking. Anything above 80%, 60% for yellow, 40% for orange, and 20% for red. You're going to see that the steps within priority three are all on green, which may, may be misleading. I'll talk about that a little bit in terms of why that is. But that's kind of how we went through our strategy leads and ranked our different priorities. So when we think about, again, this first strategy, the Academy High School model, what's happened? You know, we say we're green and we're on track. Well, we went through four master planning sessions, which began in October, ended in January. Those have been conducted. We had an Academy 101 session that sort of was put together and provided to our principals to present to their school staff. That I would consider to be on track, but we had, we did hit a few hiccups in the road on that because that was all scheduled for January 3rd and then school was out. And then, then we had a week in January that school was out. So we've had some challenges with the scheduling around that. I'm actually going out and taking part in the ones at Central this, this week. That's been rescheduled a couple of times. So we intended for that to happen by the end of January, but unfortunately, because of all the, all the things, it has gotten pushed off a little bit. We're in the process of finalizing the portrait of a graduate, which, again, if you've been part of that process with the, with the Academy work, you know that that was really where we began. And some of these large meetings with the community and with students and parents and teachers was really thinking through, when we talk about graduates from our Knox County High Schools, what are those competencies, those skills, those things we expect them to be able to demonstrate that we know will be essential to their success post-graduation? And so we spent some time really thinking through that and reshaping that. And so that is still underway, that we're finalizing that because that'll be an important sort of stake in the ground for the work, I think, moving forward. Key accomplishments is we've begun the process for several of the professional development components, of being able to procure those for several of the professional development pieces that'll be necessary because obviously, you know, there's going to be different pieces that our staff and the school is going to need. We're going to have training for leaders as well. And so we've begun the process of being able to secure that so that we can begin that in the summer. We had 16 different teams of people that participated in writing aspects of the master plan. And those final tactic plans, as they're called, were due February the 4th. So we're now, we'll be in the phase of taking those tactic plans and putting them together into more of a comprehensive finished final plan that will help, you know, set out some procedures and expectations for schools as they begin the work really next year. And the next steps, we've got 25 folks from Knox County Schools that will be making a visit to Nashville to participate in an onsite study visit and look at some of the schools who have been implementing a model, not necessarily the model we'll use, but a model for career academies over time. We have some hiring to do for academy coaches, which will be a crucial support position in this role, really serving in support of the principal, in support of the school academies, and serving as a liaison with those partners that are going to be part of the work. And that'll happen, hopefully, through the hiring process, getting them ready for summer because we'll have some training. So we're shooting for May of '22 on that. And then we've already begun some conversations around setting the date and time for the final master plan to be published and really to have our community designation, which is sort of a celebration that speaks back to the community who's been a part of this and says, you know, we've finished the work that we started in terms of writing this plan. And that, that is when you officially become recognized as a community with the Ford Next Generation Learning Organization. The second strategy within our priority around post-graduation readiness ties back into work-based learning. And so one of the things in the, in the ESER budget that we set out and kind of wrote some action around was being able to expand our work-based learning opportunities, but doing that by creating opportunities actually at the school site. We know that it can be challenging for students who maybe have limited transportation or honestly don't have a network where they already have access to someone, an employer, who wants to give them a job, which often is how we find work-based learning placements. And so we want to start to think about what that might look like to provide some of these more authentic experiences in the school site through practicum and through work-based learning on the actual, at the school location. And so our strategy leads on this particular part are Chris Tucker and Gina Kirby that work in the CTE department. Both are very familiar with, with work-based learning. And we have begun the process of having the schools to essentially promote some ideas with us, right? Like what would work in your school? What would you see as being a need or a nice fit with a program you already have for a work-based learning experience? And have asked principals to submit some ideas to us, really, so we can just start to collect those ideas and have a discussion around what's feasible and start to prioritize and set some timelines for these projects. But from an implementation standpoint, by spring of 2023, we'd like to have an approved plan for at least half of the high schools in Knox County. And then by 2024, have 100% of our schools with a completed plan for this work. The outcome goal, again, would be to increase the number of students who are enrolled in a CTE work-based learning experience. And we feel like these experiences could give them that. And we will be looking to see the base, or use the baseline number from the spring of 2023 to make those comparisons in the long term. Again, they are on track as far as the process goes. They've begun the process, principals have started to submit applications for that. We actually only have three that have submitted at this point in the last couple of weeks. So we're going to do some reach out and, and again, make sure there's some traction around that, some additional support if maybe principals are a little unclear on what they're being asked for. I've been out and had a couple of conversations at two other high schools that haven't submitted applications yet and kind of cleared up some of their understanding on that. So again, I think there's some work to be done there. Also important is that Chris and his team have started having conversations already with our KCS maintenance and facilities folks. Because when we think about these types of projects, which could have implications for facilities changes, certainly with equipment and all that, but we want to, we want to be able to make sure that we're planning this out in sequence and with, with an understanding of the other things in our ESER grant that play into facilities and the workload that we have to take on. So certainly, there could be some needed vendor agreements and other contractors that would have to be involved in this work, depending on what the projects end up being. And then the next step is going to be to, once, once we have more of these plans, really to bring a team together to start to look at the feasibility of these projects, look at the time that it's going to take to complete them, alignment back to programming. All of those things need to be assessed as we start to think about where we want to start this work and how fast we can get rolling on that. Next is middle school career exploration and awareness, which is really just about becoming more consistent in the way we approach this work with our fifth through eighth graders. As we know, if you, if you get all the way to high school before you've ever thought about careers, that may be sort of a late start. And there's, you know, a lot of guidelines and standards and benchmarks set by the state already, whether you look through the counseling standards or you look at some of the milestones for career awareness that are out there and, again, published by the state. We also have some policy, state board policy requirements of how we communicate with students about their interests, their aptitudes, and how we link that to what they know about CTE programming at the high school. So lots of things are out there that indicate we need to do a better job and need to be focused on how we approach this work with our, with our schools. This is one of those that, again, is because we got money in November, we're looking at different vendors and different, you know, curricular resources, software, things that are out there that might be of use when we think about how to approach this work across our schools and how it will be executed. And so really, they're in the stage right now of issuing RFPs, writing, writing the paperwork that it takes in order to go out and secure these resources. So very early in the process. And then our goal will be, once we kind of know those vendors and know the resources that are out there, to establish what we expect, what are our grade level outcomes as we think about that experience from fifth to eighth and the resources that we may need for career awareness and exploration for these students. Consider this one, again, to be on, on track. And we talked about them going after the procurement, that's kind of a first step. They have already begun to look at the different career readiness resources that are out there as an indication for what types of things they need to procure. And have talked to several external partners, including Ford, who has some communities that are engaged in middle schools work to look at their college and career readiness structures. Again, the next steps really are around convening some working committees, some steering committees. We think about middle schools and, and again, how this work fits back into the buildings. The schedules even around like related arts and things like that. The staff they have available in terms of who works there are very different. And so we have to think about the work in a variety of environments and who will own it. And so there's, that's going to require some engagement with a variety of school counselors, teachers and principals to think through that work. So there'll, there'll be a considerable amount of steering committee work that'll have to happen to kind of get rid of that. And honestly, a lot of planning in this first year will be what we're looking at. Counseling and advisement is a, is a big part of this work as well. When we think about either career awareness or we think about the high school academies model, obviously, all of these are related back into that. And so when we thought about a strategy here, it was to develop and implement a system for how we're creating and tracking those personalized plans that students make that take them from secondary to post-secondary and really hook them into a plan and a pathway when they leave high school. And so our, our goal with this is to ensure, first of all, we, let me, let me back up a step. We've got some additional staff positions in the ESER funds around a college and career counselor, is how we're titling it. That may or may not, because that's in the works right now, may or may not end up being an actually licensed school counselor. It could be more of like a coordinator position, but that's how it's titled for the purpose of, of the ESER plan. So we'll keep that name for, for the time being. But we've, we've got it in the plan to hire one of those for each of the middle schools and the high schools to come in and help into, speak into this work. And so our goal is to ensure that by the fall of 2022, starting off next year, that we've got at least 90% of those positions filled so that they can be in there and active, helping us to accomplish some of the goals around this work with these post-secondary plans. And then as an outcome, we want to ensure that at least 90% of our eighth to 12th grade students have completed a focused plan of study by next year, spring 2023, at the end of that school year. Again, one that will, that will provide them with some traction as they move from grade level to grade level. Procurement is a piece here as well. There's, there's some counseling software that counselors actually already use, but looking at continuing to utilize that in the future called SCUDA. And it really helps them track their time and show where are they spending their time in terms of the different responsibilities, academic, social, emotional, college and career work that they have. And then also, there was an action step within the original ESER plan to look at some outside consultants who can come in and really do a survey assessment and look for ways to strengthen the program, make suggestions about different ways that we could strengthen our, our outcomes with our, our secondary counselors. Key accomplishments is that while we're thinking about the middle and high school career counselor, college and career counselor roles that we're going to hire, we also have identified the need to have some additional support for that department. So Jody Overton, who is the counseling specialist with Knox County, is actually, has actually been working and drafted some job descriptions to give her some additional support. And again, this will sort of be the first step in onboarding and training these new counseling folks that we're looking to hire. Final, our next steps is going to be to finalize the college and career counselor or coordinator job description and, again, establish that hiring process. And we'll be looking to hire 16 middle school and 16 high school positions by May of 2022. And then the last strategy, thank you guys for hanging in there with me, is the, the high school credit recovery. Again, as I said in the beginning, you got to graduate first if you're going to be a ready graduate, right? So we want to have a multi-tiered system to help students that are behind in credits to, to earn those and get those back and really meet that target of an on-time graduation. And our first goal is to increase our participation rate for credit recovery for eligible students. So when we think about eligible, you know, if you don't pass a class, but you make 50% or better, you know, you mastered half of what you needed to master, there's an opportunity in Knox- in Knox County for you to go back through these credit recovery efforts and to recapture, if you will, that credit. If you're below a 50, it's usually an indication that you, you know, you, you probably need to think about repeating that class. So we have a category of students who maybe haven't been successful in their first run who could earn that credit back. And so that's the audience that we're talking about targeting that above 50%. And then our outcome goal, and when we talk about cohort-centered, we're talking about at a grade level, tracking that grade level over time, right? A cohort-centered decrease in the percent of students who are failing to meet that, that level of credit we know they need to stay on time as graduates. And and what that means is that they're exiting this freshman year, entering the sophomore year with six or fewer credits, 13 for, in exiting the sophomore into the junior, 20 exiting the junior into the senior. So we're going to be looking at those numbers and we're hoping to see that 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 number of students decrease over time, right? If we have so many exiting their freshman year off track, we want to see that number drop by the, into their sophomore year, drop again by the end of their junior year in tracking that cohort. And so again, capturing some data at the end of this spring will give us a baseline for the number that we're looking at for our freshman, sophomore, juniors, and then we'll be able to use that as an indication as we look at future years. And implementation updates, actually still going on currently. We reinstated the NOTA alternative program, which is something we haven't had over the past two years, giving students again, another opportunity to reengage, to earn some of those credits back. We actually have a couple of high schools also that are piloting a NOTA alternative program within their own building in addition to the ones that we run at the district level. And then we've had a January blitz is what we call it, but a credit recovery effort that began. And again, I already mentioned sort of the weird schedule we had with January. So the January blitz became the January and February blitz is running through February the 11th, but we're still engaged in that and have already started to, key accomplishments, have already started to see some feedback from the schools about students that have engaged in that opportunity and and are, you know, earning credits back. And that's, that's a real positive direction that we're seeing for that. Got about two weeks, well, a little bit less now to complete the blitz. And then once that timeframe is over with those efforts, we'll be collecting data and be able to share that by the end of February to kind of see what, what number of credits were earned back by students who were, who were deficient. And I think I'm turning this back to Dexter unless you all have any questions for me.
Any questions?
I think so. Ms. Horn?
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you for going through all this. I have a couple of questions. Okay, the, the coach, the career counselors.
Yes.
Are those different positions than the academy coaches?
They are. So the, the academy coaches really are a position within Ford and that work that is that is sort of defined as a liaison, if you will. They will really work, when you think about establishing those partnerships and continuing to sort of sustain and engage with those partners that'll, that'll support the academies. That'll be a big part of their job is to take that load off of the administration at the school. On the school side, the school-facing side of that role, they'll be working with teachers more in those SLC times as they think about, you know, different experiences and projects and things that will be planned within the academy, they support really in that role. So that, that's, that's very much pointed at the academy structure.
Okay. And so like roughly, how many do you envision per high school?
One. So it's, when you look at that, that one academy coach is a support for all the academies in that, in that building. And and again, getting to know and really connect with the partners that support the different academies in the school.
Okay. So, and so I guess my big question is, I know that ESSER funding would fund these positions and also the career and college counselors, but what about when ESSER is finished? It seems like a lot of, a lot of staff, so.
Sure.
What about the fiscal note on that past 2024? I guess is my big concern. Because I know when we talked about these, when we talked about kind of the additional positions for ESSER in general, my kind of general understanding was that we were going to try some of these things, for instance, the tutors, that kind of thing.
Right.
To see if it worked and if it moved the needle, then we would try to figure out some funding. But this obviously is not the same case.
Yeah.
So does anybody want to speak to that?
I'll be happy to take the hard questions. Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Thank you.
So the, so no, that is, that is true. So I think a lot of these things were put in for kind of proof of concept too, to make sure there, there are things that we, we feel we needed. And working with Ford, I mean, as, as Keith explained, I mean, that's a pretty critical role to really have someone who can speak business and education, who's kind of, you know, working through all those work-based learning experiences and engaging the partners and making sure they're there. So I think a couple of things we could think about moving forward. So one could be, you know, I know we won't open that can of worms about how the state funding is going to work, but I mean, there could be things that could, could radically change staffing formulas in in future years. And so I think we would be smart to be thinking with that foresight ahead, that these would be things we potentially pick up in a staffing formula so that it's not a either or kind of thing. Other parts on like the college and career counseling, I think we're talking to some community partners. I think there's people who are interested in, in thinking about that, who may be in that space now, this could make sense, you know, in, in some of the things they want to do. I mean, I know there's a lot of nonprofits that are interested in doing different kinds of things toward that. And so we would probably look for some of those partnerships. I've had a few conversations, but not ones I can really talk about publicly right now, that, you know, that we might be able to look at that and say, is, is that now a piece of their work moving in? We've kind of proven concept and then we hand off, that would be the idea. But, but no, you're right. I mean, they are additional positions.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bounds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine's kind of along the lines with Susan. So the goal is 90% fill rate of college and career counselors. I want to make sure I understand, so that's 16 and 16 for a total of 32 new positions. What about the people that are already serving as college and career counselors kind of in our high schools? Do they apply for these positions? Is this in addition to their position? Because from what I understand, we already had those positions in some of our schools. It may look different what you're talking about, but how does that work?
Yeah. And I'll be honest with you, I think that's still some of what, in my conversations with Jody, some of what I think has to be figured out. In addition to that as well, we've got schools that have, you know, PopLine as a service that comes in and provides additional college and career. Certainly there are people with Project Grad that provide some of those services and different service providers that play, I guess, in this same sort of house, if you will. So I think the way currently, and when I think about college and career counselor being named as, you know, a person on the staff at the high schools, I think that's about three or four of our high schools that have someone that's actually named in that title. I think that's part of, and, and let me say too, sometimes that's a counselor, sometimes it's not. So we really have that title being used across some different positions, different pay scales, different licenses that, that the, the people that are in those roles hold. And I think that's why, again, getting sort of the job description sharp in, in terms of what we were talking about this person doing and, and really thinking about it from nine to 12. When you think about college and career counseling, again, I'm speaking just from my experience in being out, the college and career counseling work that we see a lot of in the, when there is a named counselor, really ties back into like FAFSA. It ties back into that junior year and ties back into really that, you know, college planning, that, that kind of end of the, end of the upper class work. And this would be one that would be about really thinking about those transition plans. We talked about building those from eighth grade all the way through the 12th grade. I think you've got to have somebody who sort of comes in and, and holds the keys as we're, as we're all doing this work to make sure that each, each student, you know, again, we have that system for developing these plans, for knowing they exist, for tracking where we are on them. And quite honestly, it's, it's, you know, counselors are busy folks and, and there's a lot of work that they are already responsible for. And so it's about putting some more hands to, I think, the systematic way that we are looking at students at each grade level with this work.
Thank you for answering that in depth, and that gives me a better understanding of what you're looking towards. So thanks, Keith.
Ms. Bounds?
Yeah, I have a question as I was thinking about the Ford Next Generation kind of schools that we're doing. And you were talking about the first step is trying to do those freshman academies. Do we have any plan to have conversations with the eighth graders and with the eighth grade parents? Because a lot of them have had older kids and what they've expected for high school is going to be different for this new class. And I just didn't know how we were looking at that kind of transition.
We actually have talked about that and even within my own department, because of a change in the law technically, actually. In the past, it's always been expected that students in the seventh or eighth grade were provided with an aptitude assessment. And then it was suggested that you give them some information about high school programming afterwards. Well, that law changed actually this past year to say that you now are required to give them that information. And so we've been working on some of those promotional materials, really try to be ready for the spring to do some of that. But now too, thinking about the Ford work as a layer of that, that piece. So really thinking about materials and stuff that we can put out that, we've talked about that a little bit in our, we have a weekly call where we kind of look at that, we've talked about that as well with, with the promotions. But no, it, it is on the, it's on the minds of those that are, that are doing that, but we haven't like firmed up exactly what that looks like. But you know, there's lots of eighth grade parent nights and things like that that are opportunities for, for that type of conversation.
I haven't thought it would happen yet. It's kind of coming eighth graders.
For sure.
Is your transitioning into the ninth grade secondary.
And it certainly does make a difference. I mean, the, the, you know, what, what they will experience and kind of course offerings and things like that for the freshman academies is a little bit different than probably what the normal transition to, or historical transition would be to high school.
Mr. Tian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess really to start this off, just generally, I would like to say that having talked to some students, there is confusion around this academy structure and the Ford NGO plan and everything around that. And there was some frustration about a lack of kind of transparency about what exactly is going on and how like that would impact future students. So I know first off, that in the Ford NGO program, it was set, stated that students would be a very important aspect of it. Could you tell me through these master planning sessions and things related to that, what kind of student input has there been?
Yeah. So I'll take you all the way back to last spring. Part of the first phase, which is the explore phase of the work, is to conduct a large number of focus groups, which unfortunately had to be virtual because of COVID last year, but focus groups that were conducted with each of the Knox County high schools. That included a student group from each high school. It included a teacher group from each high school. It included a parent group from 12 of the 15 high schools that were involved. In addition to the school representatives, we had a variety of community representatives as well through post-secondary groups, business groups, different, you know, convenings of different focus groups. They did a total of about 49 of those that were done. And so certainly there was an opportunity last spring for a selection of students from each school to have a conversation through that focus group about really what their experience currently was in high school, how that might look different, what they liked about their high school, what they'd like to see more of, what they'd like to experience that maybe they weren't experiencing. So that's really how the process began last spring. When we moved from the explore phase into planning this year, which is sort of the vision casting, the, the student group we had for our October meeting, which was our first kind of vision casting meeting, was a little larger, quite honestly. I think we had about two to three from each high school that was involved, and that was seven high schools. So we were in that 15 to 20 range, I think, exactly for that time. And they were very much involved in our initial conversations around sort of drafting a why statement. You know, why is this work? Why do we want to think about redesigning the high school model? You know, what, what could be the benefit of, of going in this direction? And then also, as I mentioned already, that portrait of a graduate, which is again, a sort of painting a picture for, you know, no matter which school or community you attend, we would expect that a graduate coming out of Farragut High School would have the same exposures, build the same skills, have the same experiences to prepare them for post-secondary as a student coming out of Fulton. Like it, it should be the same thing. And so the portrait of a graduate really is about, was about Knox County schools along with that variety of post-secondary partners, parents, students, teachers in the room being able to have a conversation about what do we want for our community and for those students. And so that was a big one in the first couple of meetings, kind of getting that finalized. But we had a, had a student group that participated from the, from the seven schools. Again, a couple of student or two from each school. We, we had about 150 in the room as far as the whole group size went. So that was, you know, we, we couldn't have, I guess, a class full of kids from each school. But we did have them in there talking about things like our student ambassador piece to this program, how student leadership will look through this program, different student experiences. And so they were able to be there and weigh in on those, those aspects of the work as well.
Thank you very much. And also, if I, if you're, if you know this, I mean, you might not, but could you possibly provide insight as to how these students were chosen or selected or invited to these programs?
Yeah. So we, we actually left that up to our school principals. We asked them to, to help identify. I do know that some of them that participated in the conversation with us during the live meetings actually had, had gotten a chance to participate in some of the focus groups the year before. So they're at least familiar with, you know, the startup of that conversation and that sort of piece. But no, they were, they were definitely selected at the school level.
Thank you. Kind of moving more to the academy structures, because I want to just make sure that students understand what this academy will look like in the future. First looking at that, those freshman seminars, could you talk about a little bit more of what those classes will look like?
Yeah. So the freshman seminar is a single class. It's designed to be either, you know, a traditional block class that would be a semester-long, one-credit class, or a 45-minute could be fit into a skinny over the course of the year. If I had this sort of breakdown, kind of how that class flows, the first part of it really is around some, you know, soft skills, I would call them employability or success skills, really things that will help you be successful when you think about your high school experience, moving from middle school into high school, things like time management, skills like being, you know, collaborative, working on a team, those sorts of things will be aspects of, you know, pieces you would learn about, employability skills, soft skills. You transition from that first part of the class into a time where you're able to do some types of tools, like we use U-Science in Knox County, to, to take some exam, not exams, tests, to learn a little bit about your, your own interest, interest inventories, your aptitudes, where do you show strengths? And there's some reporting on the backside of that that really takes that and ties it into different career paths and tracks. And you can say, okay, these would be good fits for me, these may be not-so-good fits, but it gives you a starting place to explore. And then from that midpoint in the class where you've done that, you start to promote and market your pathways that would come out of that. So when you think about, again, a Farragut High School, as they identify the themes for their academies, the pathways, the elective pathways that make up those themes within, those would be, that would be the time that those freshman students would have, again, this information about me and start to think about, okay, the next three years, I have the opportunity to dive a little deeper into one of these pathways, which one feels like it would be the best fit. And so really coming out of that freshman seminar experience, the students have the opportunity to make a decision about, you know, what they think the pathway that would be the best fit for them would be.
Thank you. Kind of moving on through those 10 through 12 academies, I understand that obviously all of this is still in planning and there's not been anything that's technically been finalized yet, but could you also give a description of what those will look like?
Will you repeat the question?
Basically, just could you provide more details as to what the 10 through 12 academies might look like?
The 10 through 12?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, you know, I would say, and we've, we've sort of communicated this with our principals as well, you know, your, your academies will be largely probably career-themed when you think about that. But even within that, as you think about the pathways within that, that doesn't mean every pathway would necessarily be a CTE pathway. So Farragut's a great example when you think about that as well. You're familiar with this, I wasn't talking about that. So when you think about Farragut, they have currently a STEM program, which is a CTE program engineering. I know also that there's lots of students that take upper-level AP tracks when they think about their elective focus. So you could take something like a STEM CTE program that students are following and pair that in with a different pathway that might be just AP science-focused or AP math-focused. Or you could plug in an IT pathway, like a coding pathway into something that, that would all fall under an umbrella of STEM, right? While some would have a very engineering-focused CTE path, others would be much broader and more open. But no matter which of those pathways within that academy you would be a part of, you would still have that theme that would bring in partners from different science realms, different, different fields, different career tracks that could speak to the students, could provide experiences for the students who are learning advanced science, who are learning engineering, who are learning coding, to have application and connection to career tracks that would allow them to take something maybe that they're good at and, and continue But no matter which of those pathways within that academy you would be a part of, you would still have that theme that would bring in partners from different science realms, different, different fields, different career tracks that could speak to the students, could provide experiences for the students who are learning advanced science, who are learning engineering, who are learning coding, to have application and connection to career tracks that would allow them to take something maybe that they're good at and, and continue to explore it, to find those post-secondary connections and programs that would help support them if they wanted to continue down that track. Again, you could take something like an arts focus and plug it in with something like a digital arts program. So you take something that's very computer based and, and move it in with something that's maybe more performing, performing arts based. So it's really, the idea really is that the theme itself provides that opportunity for a deeper experience, for a connection to the career. It doesn't mean that every pathway that makes up that academy would necessarily have to be the CTE pathway. And then in addition to that, you know, there, there's always going to be electives, global electives that are available in the building to every student. So when you think about the time you would spend in your academy from a 10th to 12th, it's probably 50% of your time would be spent with that group of teachers, that smaller learning community. But you know, you may have to go off your academy to take a foreign language or to take an AP offering that's maybe outside of your academy or something like that. But those are still planned for and built into the experience for, for students to be able to do.
Thank you very much. I guess another question is with regards to, I mean, I'm sorry for all the questions.
You're good.
Like I said, students are, from what I've heard, frustrated about not hearing about this because I know, you know, things have been moving really fast. I understand that the freshman seminar class will be implemented the next school year. So I know students want to have that information to know what exactly is happening. So on that note, actually, what plans, if any, do you all have for, you know, ensuring that students and other members of the community have an idea of, you know, any future changes that are coming to this program? Any new plans or updates or anything like that?
Well, so first of all, I would say I'm not super surprised that there's not a ton of information out there. Because I've already noted, we've been going through a pretty robust process for four months of writing the plan that will actually conduct this, right? So we're able to put enough, I guess, stakes in the ground to say freshman academy is this tangible first step. Like we can define this, we know what it is. But there's still a lot of decisions that have to be made and really have to be made at the school level about best fit, about our students, about our community. And there, there will have to be extra input, additional input as we start thinking about selecting themes and, and the things that are going to matter most to each community. There's going to have to be a process for the school to do some additional collecting. And even if that is, you know, hey, we're thinking about, here's five different ways we could do it. What are your thoughts? Like this is how we could pair up and group up things. There's going to have to be that part of the process to get, you know, nailed down on what those things are. So I think there'll be additional places where students and parents and teachers will be able to give some of that input. But quite honestly, I mean, we're, we're in the phase right now of trying to finalize 16 different pieces of that master plan into one and moving at a, at a pretty quick pace. But I, I think for, you know, you look right now for the 10th through the 12th grader, for the freshmen moving into 10th grade next year, you know, this is a model that's going to sort of build over time. And so for that freshman academy, we're going to have an opportunity in a window next year to make those decisions about what the themes will be and what the pathways will be. And then that freshman group after 22, 23 will move up into sort of that first cohort in the actual pathway academy, if you will. And we'll see that over time sort of build out. The experience for students who are already, you know, in the high school, it may not reflect all of the academy build out quite the same way that it would for a student who's starting next year and, and going to follow that cohort.
Thank you. And then also you mentioned the student input and how they could really help shape what these academies will look like in their individual schools. How do you foresee that input being used? You know, how impactful would that input actually be for these programs?
Well, and again, I think I'll have to go back a little bit to, to each of the schools because as you think about the programs that we have and the things that we offer currently in the schools, that does come back to things like staffing. Comes back to licensures and endorsements and the people that we have. We're very fortunate that the majority of our programs at least are justifiable when we start to think about like labor market demand and where students might follow a post-secondary track out of those programs. But certainly there's places we could tighten up and, and over time will want to look at opportunities that maybe we're not capitalizing on. So student input will be important to that. Student interest will be very important to that. But there's also other factors like those things, like teacher endorsements and workforce demand and all those things that we have to maintain sort of a, a balance with. So again, we want, we want principals to, to be thoughtful about the way they want to package this information, and we're expecting them to do that. And it'll be our role to support them and give them the tools to sort of think through what the best themes would be based on that input, based on what they have in terms of their staff already.
Just one final question.
Raymond, if we could get some more board members engaged, we can come back to you. Go ahead.
Or just one more?
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, again, I'm sorry that I have so many questions about this. Just one final question that I had some students like ask me specifically. So as we were rolling through this program in future years, should it, you know, should it be that students are not benefiting from this program, that this program is, for whatever reason, who knows? I'm not saying it will be, but for whatever reason, if it is detrimental, is there a possible quote unquote kill off button? Is there a possible way to stop this program or anything like that?
Well, I mean, I don't think we've gone into this with the, with the, the action of where do we come back and kill it, so to speak. I, I'd say going into it that certainly we're looking for certain impacts on things like graduation rate. We're looking on certain things, which again, we don't have a problem in that. It's very fortunate. We're, we're definitely looking at students being able to access different opportunities that maybe hadn't been out there for them before. We, we definitely want to get better at looking at data around things like post-secondary persistence. I think we do a pretty good job in our district of helping students access post-secondary. But we also know that some of them, and a large portion of them, sometimes don't stay in their post-secondary enrollment. So I think there's, it's, it's really looking at what role do we play in ensuring students are successful, or graduate, yes, but are successful two years, four years, six years, and getting better at sort of tracking some of those pieces right now that honestly is difficult to do. We know some things are not where they need to be, but we've, we've got additional work to do, I think, in regard to making sure as they move out, they're not only going to college or going to a trade or going to the workforce, but they're doing that in the most informed way possible and making those decisions.
Thank you very much for your answers. Again, members of the board, I'm sorry for all of the questions and taking up your time.
Board Member Horn.
Thank you. Mr. Jen, I would just like to say, I, I've heard from concerns from Farragut High School students. And so I've met extensively, I've talked several times with Dr. Bartlett. And so just a couple of things that will hopefully set your mind at ease. I think that Mr. Wilson answered very correctly. Why students haven't heard a lot is because this is in process and there's just not much to report out. Students that are currently in the building, as he said, it probably won't really affect them. So I know Dr. Bartlett is planning to talk with eighth grade parents when he has meetings, back to Ms. Bab's question. He's, he's planning to discuss this with them, the freshmen, the uprising freshmen, because it will impact them. So things that are sacred at Farragut are not going to change. So there will be all of the AP opportunities that are always there. And so those things that make each school individual, our schools are still going to be individual schools. I think you said that the, the schools are determining currently what their academies will be, so they will not be all the same, correct? All of the academies will vary from school to school based on the needs of those particular schools. So I would just ask for a little bit of patience because they're working through all of these things and it's very time consuming. This is a major shift. And so it is time consuming and change is difficult. But I've, I've asked all these questions and so I know that they're working through those things. And so I, I, you know, I hope that reassures you some, that there's, there's really, there have been students involved and there have been teachers involved and community stakeholders. And so, so it's just, it's a long process though. But, but I, I think that those things that are important at Farragut will continue to be important and that this will really just assist and help with what's already going on there. Thank you.
If I could just add, like I, I don't want, to your questions, this is not a model that takes anything away from a student. It really is about enriching the opportunities that the students have and brings a, a level of structure to a school where all of those things around work-based learning, around connections with industry partners, with community folks, having a connection point back into the school, all the things that we try to do in lots of different ways. This really gives a structure and an operation and a system to that. And so again, you know, it's not an initiative to your, to your question of if it doesn't work, right? It's not an initiative that we say, well, we're going to put this in place and three years from now, our algebra II scores are going to shoot up. It's not that kind of a thing. It really is about ensuring that as students leave us, they do that as educated and as informed and as self-aware as they can to make that next best decision for themselves.
Ms. Bab.
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, I had the opportunity, what, two years ago to go over and witness, and we're not going to do the cookie cutter of what National's doing, but see an example of what it's, what it's doing. And the thing that I came away from that I was so excited about was the industry partners that National had. We talk all the time in Knox County schools about partnerships, and I would say I'd give us a big F for it. We just don't know how to do it. We don't, we don't have a structure for doing it. And I think what this does is it's a, this is a model, and it's going to take time. It's not going to happen overnight. But it's a model to get our industry partners involved. And we, we talk about career technical all the time and we talk about career technical. And this is a way to really get it into schools. And it is change and change is painful. Nobody, everybody likes exactly the way it is. But guess what? We can't do it differently without doing change. And the one thing like I would even give as a personal example, I had a daughter that was very good at science. She did science, so she thought she should be a doctor. And she had an opportunity because I knew about it to go, I knew how to get her to apply to a program over at UT Hospital. It was a fabulous program. She loved it, but she came out of that and go, was like, I do not want to be a doctor. And what I saw about that was she did not waste four years of pre-med applying to med school to find out she did not like it. And that's what I too want to talk to parents about. Your school might not have a pathway of exactly what your kid thinks they might be interested in, but they might learn something that maybe would even pique their interest in another way. Or it might be like my child, you get the opportunity of learning, that's not what I should go into studying. And I think that's as much of an education. And I think also some of these opportunities shouldn't be about me as the parent having a connection that got my daughter to go do something at UT Hospital. We want all of our kids to have those opportunities. And right now that's not working in Knox County schools. We don't have that. So I do, I, I just applaud what we're doing with this. It is going to take time. We've got to have some patience. Even, I'm sure even with the freshman academies next year, we will learn a lot after we put them in place about what's working and what's not, and we adjust. But I, I do, I do, I'm very excited about this. I think this is something that is going to be really beneficial to the schools, but it is going to take time. And I think it's not a kill, it's a, do we learn as we go along? And, you know, we morph things or we make changes and that sort of thing. But I, I think it's exciting. I've been excited to be part of all of the community meetings. And I, I think there are quite a few board members that have been able to go, and I think we've been able to see what's going on. And I think I'm looking forward to what's going forward, but I, I do appreciate you. I, I think you're bringing valid questions that I think a lot of people, you're at the school and they're afraid. But what's funny is I think the people you're actually hearing from will never even experience it. So I do think it's even the people that are experiencing it, that they will not know about school in a different way. And I'm, I'm just want to say I'm excited about it.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also excited about it. I know many of us have gotten to volunteer and engage through the planning process. One, you mentioned the 16 tactical plans. One of those tactical plans is community and family, or communication and family engagement. That plan was just due February 4th, right? So even the way in which we communicate about this is still being planned. So it's not surprising that there's a lot of unknowns that are out there. But we, I, I want to encourage people to be patient, stay engaged with the process. One of the things I kept hearing over and over is that this is not a program. It is a process that we've been in. If we were buying a program off a shelf, we could tell everybody exactly how it was going to work. But we're building up, we're going through a process to build a plan together. So I'm looking forward to it, and I think there's going to be a lot of value added to Knox County schools. And I only have one question, and that is, and one statement actually, Dr. Murphy, I really appreciate you. You've given me a lot of confidence in this ESER monitoring. You are the man. So I appreciate the structure that you're bringing to it. But, and the only question I have is out of the different priority and goals and the strategy owners, how many total owners do you think we have in this plan?
We have four.
Unduplicated.
We have four priority owners. We have strategy owners. I would say without pulling up the numbers right now.
Yeah, just rough number.
Anywhere between 20 strategy owners. And then we have action owners, and that gets pretty lengthy as well. So we have a whole team of downtown that's working hard.
I appreciate you bringing that level of detail and structure to the, to the requirements.
Yeah, thank you so much. I mean, because I believe that we have to get it at that granular level to make sure that we're, we're meeting, we meet weekly with the strategy owners. And even before that, they meet with their action teams to make sure we're hitting deadlines and timelines with this. Because it is important work. It's expedient work, right? But it's critical work. And I just want to touch base real quick on this one slide, and I gave you guys way regarding priority three. Thank you so much, Dr. Wilson. Priority three is on track. 100% of the strategies are on track currently. I will say that with a caveat, like he said, we may come back in four months because we're starting the work, that it may be bumped down to, you know, minor delay because things may have gotten in the way of that. So, but just right now, we're moving in the right direction. Action steps completed, 5%. Action steps on track, 75%. Action steps in minor delay, based to a, a few minor things, with one, one, one or two actions, 3%. And 17% have not been started yet based on timelines, which is what we know, some of the work, like the Ford work, things of that nature as well. But I did want to talk about this. This, this came up in our priority. This has been like our big three themes. I ask our priority team weekly when we meet, you know, what are some barriers and challenges that we foresee in horizon planning that we can see down the road, like risk mitigation, right? And so managing change in a critical timeline, and you guys spoke very well, Ms. Virginia, to that, talking about it's going to take time for this. I mean, but how can we get in front of that to make sure that we got the right people, speaking the right language, that we're all on the same team, moving that down? That we have our principals, we communicate with them about things, and they're sharing it with their communities as well. And also planning ahead with procurement. So what we're doing right now is looking at our hot items for procurement, and we're kind of backwards looking at that, what needs to be happening right now with that. And also staffing challenges. I mean, that's, we, we have staffing challenges right now without this work. So how do we foresee making sure that we're moving forward with staffing challenges as well? So these are things that, you know, we got, we're trying to be proactive with on our end as well. So overall, we're looking good. We're looking great. We have a great plan in place with implementation. So we're just glad to share this out with you guys, and thank you so much for your patience.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make this super fast, and if we could have a really quick answer because we have a lot more to get to. But I just want to make this point. I've talked to Dr. Ryswick about this before because I've heard from some community members who are concerned that Ford is trying to tell us what we are doing or something to that effect. And that is, that's not the case. This is, Dr. Ryswick, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we are asking Ford to help us walk through putting a plan together. This is our plan. They're not telling us what to do. I didn't get to go to very many of the meetings, but the ones that I went to, over and over again, I heard them say, you tell us. This is not our plan. You tell us. Is that, is that an accurate statement? Is there anything you'd like to add to that? I just want to make sure that people understand that issue clearly.
No, thank you, Ms. Horn. And I think that's, that's 100% accurate. I mean, they, you know, they, they've gotten a formula together where they've done this in 50-plus communities across the United States and, and the world. And, and really it is to a lot of the things I've heard today. How do you, how do you build a framework for industry to engage in schools? How do we get students ready for those kinds of things? And I think that, you know, they've shared that across. So, you know, we, we went looking for that and looking for someone who could help us partner with that because I think as Ms. Bab said, we've been, we've struggled locally to get that kind of traction. And so, you know, so we sought them out, but no, they're very clear. I mean, I think, I would say, you know, I've worked a lot with these guys in it. Almost at times it's frustrating. We almost wish they would tell us kind of the next step as we go through it. And they're very much like, no, it's important that you, you know, take the process, get the input, what it means for you in Knoxville. And so, so they, they have been great partners, but no, I agree 100%.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, guys. Next up, next month is priority one, foundational academic skills. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And board members, we have had several requests, a short break right now, so if we want to take a very brief 10-minute break and come back.
Dr. Ryswick.
Yeah, exactly. All the listings.
Where is she? Okay. Now, I'm just going to do it. Are we ready?
Okay, so we will continue with a report from Ms. Satterfield on the superintendent search.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we, thank you, Madam Chair. So we met, the committee met earlier this month for the superintendent committee search chair, and all that good stuff. So we'll give you an update on that and just kind of discuss our next steps and where we're at. So just the overview itself, we had to come up with the actual interview dates, or the schedule itself, and what, how we will conduct the interview. So I'll give you background around that. I'll let Betsy speak about the schedule. Board member Henderson speak about the schedule, and if there's any discussion that we need to be prepared for, because we need a vote come next week. So first and foremost, we talked about the interview date. We originally, as a board, have set 16th, 17th, and 18th as the interview timeline for those days. And we, I had a conversation with Tammy Grissom, with Tennessee School Board Association, and to kind of get her input and her suggestions on those three days, because we were going to do a business meeting day, a community meeting day, and then the interview day. And she highly recommend, she highly disagreed with three days. And she highly encouraged that we, no, she was pretty like, absolutely not. Just simply because her perspective was that we're asking people to take off from their primary jobs for three days. And that's, that's a lot to ask for a candidate. So when she provided that perspective. But we also knew that we wanted to make sure that we have the opportunity for the community to meet the candidates, and also meet with business leaders as well, on top of a full-day interview from our end as well. So we found the balance between what she highly encouraged and what we wanted to make sure we fit within our community. And that's where you're going to see the schedule that board member Henderson worked on. And she worked really hard on this, y'all. I'm so proud that I delegated that to her. But, because she worked really hard on this schedule, and I'll let her speak about that. Secondly, the interview questions. You all, I sent that out in email. I know that didn't come with much context, because we can't really deliberate. So I apologize that for if anything was confusing. But we, this is an opportunity for us to talk about it. So the first set of questions, that was from Tennessee School Board Association. That is a template that they provided. And we, as the committee, thought that they were really good questions. However, they were a lot, and a lot of information. So what we decided as a committee, this is what we're recommending for the whole board to vote on, is the Tennessee School Board Association, their, their recommendations. We would like the candidates to already have those questions, for them to come to our interview and provide a 20-minute presentation answering those questions. So like a performance task or a take-home opportunity, for them to come prepared and do a 20-minute presentation that will walk us through each of those questions, and we can write in criteria. And then there's a second set of questions that we provided. And those are the same questions from the last superintendent search, and those are the questions that we will ask right live in, during the interview. So the idea behind that is that the candidates will come prepared, that way that they can show up as their best selves in the presentation, to give us a 20-minute presentation. And then they will answer the questions that we, as board, agree upon live in the session. Tammy also recommended that 90 minutes is the ideal time for the interview session. Clarity on what was just presented.
Okay, so I got the two documents with questions. And the ones that had the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 beside it, that's the one we're going to send out to them.
For the presentation.
For the presentation. Okay. And then, I had another question, spacing. Oh, so then we're going to talk about, at some point, I don't know if it's tonight or Wednesday, the actual questions that we're going to ask. So that's what I was asking, is we're going to come up with like 10 questions, and will we all be assigned a que, I mean, will we know like who's asking what? And so it's sort of very, we're kind of going into the interview scripted, which I think would be a good idea that we.
Yes. And so whatever questions that we vote on as a board, those are the questions we have to stick to. And so we can have a conversation about what those questions look like, but we will need to vote on those questions, if that is the process that we want to move forward with.
And will we kind of assign certain ones of us to ask certain questions, or something like that? Or maybe just one of y'all from the committee?
We can, yeah. If it was 10, we can all just take a question.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for the additional work, too, on the committee and over the last couple of months. When you said 90 minutes, does that include the 20-minute presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be 90 minutes total.
And that was just recommendation from Tammy, from her experience.
Right. I don't know if this is possible from a, of the Meetings Act, but based upon the process we went through to edit our criteria, I don't think any of us want to relive that again. And I'm wondering if it would be possible for anybody to recommend any changes to the questions, send them to the committee, and let them provide a final to bring to the meeting, based upon recommendations from individual board members.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, you had sent, you had sent out a list of 10 questions, you asked for feedback. And I guess what I'm saying is, instead of processing through all that feedback line by line, can we send you, the committee, the feedback, and say, "We're trusting you as a committee. We're empowering you to select the final 10 questions."
Okay. That's an option if the board wants to do that.
Instead of editing the questions together in a public meeting, which was a little bit of a hot mess.
We can lift that up as a vote for next week, for sure. We can make that a consideration.
Yeah. I would be open to that.
Sorry, again, I spaced it.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Mr. Watson's consideration of shortening that process, but I would actually like to see a more confidential question process, so that the candidates do not have our questions in advance. So, and I believe what we did last time worked very well. We submitted, and I don't fully remember, but we submitted questions to our HR director, and she compiled those and kept them confidential until we were ready to begin our meeting. And that way, people who are with us every day would not have seen those. People in the community will not have seen those. Candidates who are coming in to interview will not have seen those. So the first time they would be, be heard is in that interview process. So I would very much like to consider having Mr. Bolton compile those questions and, and keep them for us, and maybe we could each submit two, and then he could take out duplicates or something, or reword, or however.
Yeah, so that was a, that's what, we brought that up in the committee as well, to see if there was a way to keep it confidential. And Gary, if you can speak to that a little bit, and if we need to do that process, what would that look like for us?
I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair, would you please repeat the question?
Yeah, no problem. I know, I know, it's a lot. And so we talked about confidentiality, confidentiality at the committee meeting regarding questions. And so we did talk about, is, is there, is there a way for us to do the aspect of what board member Owens mentioned, as to keeping the questions confidential?
Okay.
Until then?
Sure, thank you. So there's really two options. I mean, one option is to develop the questions in public, as you've been doing. The other option would be to designate someone to develop the questions, and then use those questions, as a board, the same questions for each candidate. I mean, that's, that's really your only two ways to do it. Obviously, the questions would become public as soon as you all decide to use them, but I mean, but, but you could have, you could designate someone to develop those questions.
Could those questions be with our input to that person? So we could send in suggested questions, and then that person could develop the list?
You could, but those would be public record. I mean, when you're sending those in. I mean, it could, I think the que, I mean, you know, the question is, can they be developed confidentially? I mean, they would have to be developed confidentially by that designated person, and then, and then once presented, they would be public. But if, but if board members are sending back and forth, then, then conceivably, that could be part of the public record as well.
Can somebody look back and figure out how we did this last time?
Because I don't know if you've heard her. What she was suggesting is we all send them to like someone that's not one of us, maybe, but someone like Scott Bolton over HR. He come up with 10 questions. Yeah, I guess.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Draw too many parallels to last superintendent search, because it was, it was different structure and completely open, for the most part. But, but my recollection was that, that you all collaborated with HR, Mr. Bolton's predecessor, I believe, and, you know, that, that HR really developed those questions, and then, and then brought them to the board to make sure that the board was good with them, and then, and then I think they were approved right before you all just rolled into it. So.
Right before the interview.
Ms. Owen, where you?
I'm, I'm thinking now. Maybe, maybe we could just have a conversation with Mr. Bolton about what we would like to see in the questions, with that.
Mr. Bolton, would you like to say something?
Madam Chair, board members. Ms. Owen, could you repeat the question?
I, I'm trying to determine how we can have input into the questions without the candidates having the questions. So maybe, maybe we need to reach out to your predecessor and figure out how we did that last time?
Absolutely. My question is, to what, and what would be the intent of doing that? And the reason why I ask is, since these are a public meeting, do you, do you, any superintendent that desires to see this position, to have this position, I would think would be following this process, and would, probably if the board presented the questions as public, would come together with a real great formalized answer? If that's the intent, is how that answer was formalized, and to the extent it was processed? Or does the board want to see how the applicant answers the question on the spot? Then it depends on the intent of what the board desires as part of that interview process. I, I mean, I think that, since it is a public process, I don't think it gives any one applicant an advantage by, by, you know, hiding the questions until that given time.
I think we're doing both. Since we have the first set of questions from TSBA, they would have those prepared responses. And then the second set that we would develop would be on the spot. And of course, if those questions are determined on Wednesday... And of course, if those questions are determined on Wednesday, then those questions are no longer on the spot.
I'm happy to help in any way that we can. We'll be happy to do it.
Thank you, I knew you would.
Ms. Bowns?
I understand what Ms., thank you. I understand what Ms. Owens is saying because they are gonna have that ability to take those TSBA questions and formulate all of their answers. So I think what she's asking is for a more, just how would you answer it without, you know, thinking it through for three days or whatever? I would remind the board that there will be that opportunity at that community meeting that we talked about where, if you remember last time, Ms. Owen, they were asked questions on the spot by the community and, you know, people in the audience that submitted questions. And the committee talked about how informative that particular meeting was in watching how they responded without being, you know, fully prepared with set answers. So there still is that opportunity regardless of which way we go. And I don't know how Mr. Bolton wants to do that. And you could reach out to Kelly and see. Or he could just take these 10 questions that we kind of talked about as a committee and we used last time and kind of redo those. I mean, that would give him, if Mr. Bolton decides to do them and give them to us at the last minute to ask the candidates, he could use this as a framework and add or delete things that he feels like needs, should have changed. Is that, does that make sense, Ms. Owen? Okay, so anyway, there is that, still that opportunity regardless of which way we go to have them think on their feet and on the spot.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe this would satisfy Ms. Owen and, and anybody else, any other board member. If we were to, if you have a question or questions that you would like to see answered kind of on the spot, call or email to Mr. Bolton and let him, as Ms. Bowns said, just let him incorporate that into the questions and get them in a form that satisfies these questions as well as any other questions that board members have. I think he, he would do, in my opinion, he would do a good job of incorporating them. And that, that way they would, they would stay relatively quiet until they were revealed. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree, I think we can come up with an approach to satisfy both types of questioning. And I think both can be important. I know one of the things that we would want our superintendent to be is nimble. There's gonna be a lot of things that they're gonna be asked to be nimble on when they're actually in the job. So I think kinda seeing how they answer those questions is good. If, if now's not enough time, I do have a question about the, the schedule and I know.
Yeah, so she'll tell us now, but I wanna make sure that I'm hearing clear for the question aspect. So, cause next week we gotta vote. So I will present a motion as what we have here. And if anybody wants to make an amendment to that motion, and then we can vote on that next week, on that process. Wednesday, on that.
You keep confusing me when you say.
On, on that process, then that's good. So that's, that's what I'm hearing collectively. Just vote on the questions that we have now. Well, we don't, what is the process? What would be the process?
My, I think what I'm hearing is that we are voting on, do we want a set of questions they get in advance? Which is what you all are recommending, and a set of questions that they don't get in advance. And then who do we entrust to finalize those sets, that set of questions?
So is it appropriate, Gary, for me to get a feel of who wants anonymous questions? I mean, questions in advance or not in advance? Is that appropriate for right now?
Do you mean from board members?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, what, I mean, I mean, I think y'all just need to discuss and vote on it would be, would be our, our recommendation. And, you know, I mean, another suggestion may be that, that board members just voice what types of concepts you may want to see. And then if you're allowing Mr. Bolton and his department to, to formulate the questions, then allow him to do that, but you all just communicate, you know, generally what you want to see in the questions. And in that way, I think that would accomplish the goal that you're looking at.
Mr. Bolton, do you feel, do you feel equipped and qualified and confident to be able to, to be able to create superintendent questions?
Madam Chair, board members. I, I do. I feel like, I feel like we've got the folks on staff that can pass the good questions.
You don't wanna say it though.
Love the confident answer. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I would be fine with, with Mr. Bolton taking care of those questions. And also would, and maybe you're gonna get to this, Betsy, when you talk about the schedule, but I guess the other part of that question would be the framework around questions during the community forum. So whether there's going to be a couple of questions that kind of kick off the evening and then it's turned over to questions from the, from the community. So I guess you'll get to that. So anyway, that would be my question on that. And, but otherwise, I, I would be completely fine with that. So perhaps we would, we would only vote on the, the other piece that would be the public part from TSBA. I would be fine with that.
And again, to reiterate, the public part would be that they would already have those criteria questions from TSBA. And their, Tammy already knows that the expectation is that in their 20-minute presentation, they're just walking us through each criteria. So it's not a stopping conver- have a conversation about it. It's we're scoring as they go through the presentation. That way, being that, that thought process behind that is because we do want them to come as prepared as possible. But I do also understand being able to respond in that moment. So I, we felt that that was a, a fair approach.
Thank you. If the board should vote to turn this over to Mr. Bolton, which I'm very comfortable with, I would just ask that you put our name beside a question. So we're assigned a question to ask, so it's consistent all the way through. We don't picky in which question we want to ask. We just, you put our names beside them and assign them to us. I know that sounds picky, but I think it's the best way to do it.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just suggest that anybody that want, any board member that wishes to ask would contact Mr. Bolton probably tomorrow. And probably you need to make it as precise or short, whatever. You know, doesn't need to be a, a long drawn-out thing. But just, just to get a, an idea of what, and I feel confident that he would do that. But actually, what I wanted to ask, if we're gonna vote on that, Mr. Law Director, since we're, we normally don't vote in workshops, do we need to take a vote to spend the rules?
You would, you would vote on Wednesday?
Oh, I thought you were gonna vote tonight?
No.
Okay. Okay, alright, I stand corrected.
Ms. Fab?
That was just my question for Wednesday. Does somebody need to make a motion to turn this over to? So somebody, one of us, if.
Perfect.
I'm sorry. In, in response to Ms. Horn's question, I'd like to suggest using the format that the League of Women Voters chooses. When they have like candidate questions, audience members turn them in on a card. And then a moderator can look through those cards. And if there are questions that are very similar, they can combine those questions. And then that moderator can, can ask the questions.
I like that. And so leading into the, what's gonna happen on the schedule. Board Member Henderson, would you like to talk about the plan for February 17th and 18th?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Satterfield. So I was tasked with coming up with the two days for our candidates. And I just wanna thank, I worked very closely with KEF and Ms. Coteen on this project. And it was a true partnership. It was a lot of work, so thank you, Ms. Coteen, for all, all your help on that. So we created this schedule. And we wanted to be very mindful, very intentional, that it was a meaningful day for the community and for our candidates. And so on the schedule here, we have it broken down as for candidate 1, 2, and 3. And as you can see, we have one-on-one meetings with certain community leaders as well as foundations and some school tours as well. We were very intentional with the school tours. We wanted our candidates to have a feel that our schools were urban, suburban, rural schools. But we also had to be mindful of the proximity of the schools also. So we wanted to make sure that during this day, as they're driving around, the schools are close together. And then we have a community leaders lunch. That would be, and this schedule took a lot, and this was a lot of work. You can see there's a key down here and that's where the locations are for these things. That was another thing. I had to make sure all these folks are available, all these locations are available, so it was a lot. So our community leaders lunch, we were also very intentional with who was included in that lunch. It will be at the Chamber, the Chambers room is available for that. And I can send you the list of participants. And also these folks have it on hold on their calendar. They know we have to vote on it, but they do have it held currently. We have Sam Brown with NAACP, Pastor Darryl Arnold with the OBC Church, Kelly Chaney, who's president of TCAT, Mike Odom from the Chamber, Matt Ryerson from United Way, Reverend Renee Kessler from the Beck Cultural Center, Tammy White from Leadership Knoxville, who will lead the, who will lead that lunch. We have Phyllis Nichols from the Urban League, Claudia from Centro, Steve Diggs from Emerald, Bart McFadden with the Boys and Girls Club, Leonard Adams from Knoxville College, Dr. Keith Gray from UT Medical, Jordan Mullenhour, Tanisha Baker from KUB, and Chris Letso's from KEF. So we tried to have a very robust group of people at that lunch. After the lunch, our candidates will meet with Knox County Education Association. They'll meet with members of KCS senior staff. They will do a tour of Austin East. And then they'll meet with Mayor Jacobs and Mayor Cannon. And then all three of these, all three candidates will meet and do all of this, but on a rotating schedule. At first, we thought, you know, do they need to all meet together? But we thought by having them do one-on-one with all of these folks, it would be more meaningful. So, opens it up to discussion. Oh, let's talk about day two. And we can also talk about the community forum as well. So day two, pretty easy. Breakfast with candidate one, and then they will do their presentation. We will break, have lunch with candidate two, with their presentation, and with candidate three, snacks and their presentation. Make sense? I know it's a lot. Do you have a question for me?
Ms. Fab?
Yeah, first off, while this is a lot of work, I'm very, thank you very much. My question is a personal one. On the first day.
Yes.
Where are we, do we go to the community lunch? Board members, do they go to it?
So.
Go ahead.
Going back to what Tammy recommended from the beginning, it would be best if board members just kinda stay on where board members are wanting to be, or on that last day. Now, you're free to go where you wanna go, but just for the sake of the candidates to be as open and comfortable as possible, that Tammy recommended that we kinda stay out the way until it's the interview time.
I, I guess my one, I mean, and I'm really fine with all that. The one I would be interested in is the community forum. I mean, I, I mean, I would really, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna ask the question there, but I'd like to be kind of in the back or whatever. So I, I guess that's where I'm just trying to plan out my day and where I should plug myself in. So really, as board members.
Yes.
The 6 o'clock is about the only thing on that day.
Right, right, correct, yes, yes. So when these candidates meet, for example, with the leaders of UT or with KEF, that is meant to be that candidate with that particular leadership organization. And then I was planning on coming to the community forum, so I definitely think that we should be there, if you can.
And so I guess, let me ask you this about the meetings with all of these community members.
Yeah.
Is it more for the candidates to get a feel for Knox County? Because obviously, it's not helping us make our decision.
Right, yes.
So I mean, what's kind of the intent, your, your feeling of intent on meeting with all these people? Which I think is great, I'm just.
Yeah, did you wanna speak?
Yeah, I, I think the intent behind it is that when they come in to interview on that Friday, that they have a real good understanding of what Knox, of Knox County as a whole. Because they've met with all these different leaders, they've been throughout the community, they've met with students and schools. So when they come before the board on Friday, they're not just blind, they have insight.
No, that helps me a lot. And then on the interview day. So I'm assuming our, our interviews broadcast or video and stuff like that? Okay.
Yes.
And then what about like the breakfast and lunch period?
That won't be broadcast so much. That's just a time for us to kind of be with the candidate and see how they interact in a less formal setting.
Okay.
I mean, it is public notice, so we will, people will be in the room and everything on day two will take place in the AJ Building. So anybody can be there, but the intent is the breakfast, lunch, or snack wouldn't necessarily be broadcast.
And who do you have leading the community forum?
That's a good question. So in the past, Harley, did you do it before?
No, ma'am. We did help, help with the community meeting in terms of gathering the questions and getting all the equipment there. But we actually had a moderator. And I believe that was Heather Haley with WVLT.
Okay. Yeah, no, Tammy from Leadership Knoxville. Yeah, yeah. I'll ask her and see if she'll do that too. That's okay. On that day. Unless she wanted to show up, that's fine.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Henderson, I just wanna echo to the work. I mean, just, you know, the phrase herding cats, I mean, I can only imagine what this is like.
I actually do love doing things like this.
Well, you can tell you do, right?
I really do.
You can tell you do, which is great, and I really, really appreciate that. On the community forum piece, I know often, like those League of Women Voters, they often use moderators from TV stations, so there's probably several that have done that and done that type of moderation before as an idea. I wanna offer up another, I thought, and that is, so I think if we come to the community forum, we are gonna get to see how the candidate engages with community, which I think is important. And obviously, we're gonna have the opportunity to interview them the next day. The one thing that I, the one other thing that I'm wondering if it might make sense for us to be a part of, but not participate in, but actually be present for, is the community leader lunch. And my thought in that is seeing how these candidates interact with other leaders in our community, because I think that's an important part of that. And they can tell me how they do that in an interview the next day, but I wanna see how they navigate the room, how they engage folks, all that kind of thing. And again, I, I wouldn't use that space as an opportunity to dominate the room or ask questions or anything like that. But as just a, basically a silent observer, I don't know, it's just a thought for the board to consider. Is, is that a place that we might wanna also be present? Not in any of these individual meetings or school meetings or anything like that, but just in that luncheon.
I mean, yeah, you're open, board members can go wherever they want to.
Well, I don't wanna be the guy. Oh, Daniel's rolling up, you know, I, I'd rather.
Mr. McMillan?
Well, if it makes you feel better, Daniel, I, I agree with you.
Mike, we're gonna fist bump later, alright?
I'm just bringing people together with my schedule.
Yeah, one other question is, I'm assuming we're gonna have sort of a tour guide for each of these people on this date? And have you figured out who's in charge?
Yeah, so I have not figured out who is tasked with that yet. If a board member would like to do that though, that could be a good job to be the tour guide for.
The only problem is I don't, and this is where I kinda got with the luncheon. I think the luncheon's not a bad idea, but I almost feel like we shouldn't sit at a table with the candidates. Cause then I think you would almost get a relationship with the person over another one. So that's why I don't, I don't think school board people should do that.
Yeah, no, no, I, I completely agree. But I do, that is one thing I have to work on, is finding somebody tasked to be the tour guide for, for these folks.
Our security, some of our, some of our security department also, you might wanna check.
That's a good idea.
Check with them.
It's a great idea.
Mr. Oaks, maybe you can help with that?
I'm sorry, what, what am I volunteering for?
Thank you for volunteering.
Alright, thank you. That is the latest of the superintendent search update. We are at the final road, again. Um, again, it's process is, Tammy will be here Wednesday to give us our final candidates. Um, as we talked about, up to five candidates. Um, and so she will present that Wednesday for us, so we will have that understanding. And then we will have the interview on the 17th and 18th. We will have a great weekend and enjoy ourselves for President's Day weekend, and we'll come back on February 22nd and have a special call meeting at five o'clock um to vote on the candidate. And Tammy will give us how we would do that process as well, when she gets here Wednesday.
I did want to bring something up real quickly. So when we vote on this schedule on Wednesday, um, can we also, I'm just curious, if, if somebody, for instance, happens to get sick, are you guys okay with the committee? Or like, let's say President Boyd gets sick, are you okay with him, you know, filling in with somebody else or us finding somebody? Would that be okay? Okay, cool, okay.
Mr. Watson?
Just one final question regarding uh the presentation. Do you know yet what body of information we'll receive about each candidate when they're presented to us? Is it, I mean, certainly at least a resume, I would think, but do we have any idea what that will be?
My, I don't know the answer, but my assumption would be the whole packet that she has, like, the whole applicant packet, um, because then it becomes public record, right?
Ms. Beck?
I guess the one question I have as a follow-up to that is, we are voting to take those three candidates that night, right?
Wednesday.
I mean, on, yeah, on Wednesday, when she presents the three candidates, do we have to vote that we're taking those three candidates?
That we're voting on the three?
This is my, this is my only question is, um, to get a packet of information about the person, I mean, it's a lot to digest, and I mean, we might even, I mean, I, huh? Well, that, that's what my kind of concern is, um, I mean, I, I'm hoping that I would be happy with the three, I mean, my assumption is I'm going to be happy with the three people that are presenting and everything like that, but to present us a packet of information about them, to us then vote on them, to not have time to digest, that's where I'm having a little bit of disconnect about this process.
I did actually have a conversation with Dr. Grissom about this last week, and she said she will go over all that and the process, in their process, when, when she comes to speak Wednesday night. So, yeah, and, and she has, you know, she anticipates that this question will come up. Um, and, and she is prepared for that, yeah.
Mr. McMillan?
Uh, you may have answered my question. You referenced something about uh five, up to five, this type of thing. So does that mean that we could have others added at the last minute, or?
So the board voted up to five. So we, Tammy might bring us three, she might bring us two, but the board as a whole added up to five, so I don't know what that looks like in this schedule if she presents five candidates.
Mr. McMillan, my pretty schedule allows for three candidates.
That's, that's, that's what I know.
But the board voted we're up to five.
That's the reason I asked. You know, I, I want to know what we were going to do with four and five.
Well, Ms. Beck?
And I think when we were talking about it as a committee, uh, yeah, I think that um, Betsy took it a little with three. But I think we, I think when that really happened, and we could still get four or five, and I'm not opposed to that, it's when we shortened it down from three days to two days because of realizing the inconvenience that that would, and the burden it would put on the candidate. So we narrowed it down to two days, and that kind of led Betsy to do a three candidate schedule. But I, you know, we can be nimble, as we heard tonight, and have great agility and change if we need to.
Yeah, but the, the board vote was up to five, so if there's five candidates, we will change this and make it work.
One final question for Mr. Doppler here. If uh, if we were to have, uh, I feel confident that uh, that she will bring us uh very qualified candidates, that uh one of whom we can approve. But if we were to want to add somebody at the last minute, the board, what would be the process? Would we have to take, would we have to go with five votes of the board to add that individual? Or would it take two-thirds?
Uh, Mr. McMillan, thank you. It would be, it'd be a majority, so it'd be five votes. Uh, you, you know, if somebody wanted to add, say there were three candidates and you all agreed that, that those were the three candidates you wanted, but somebody wanted to add one or two, uh, then, then a board member would need to nominate that person, there'd need to be a second, and then, and then a vote as normal.
Thank you.
Okay, so any more questions? Ms. Beck?
Well, that may be the process. I know that when we met with Ms. Grissom, she um, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but she was pretty adamant about not adding a candidate at the last minute, because it puts that person at, well, it's just not a fair advantage with all the candidates, because these people have been vetted, the, however many, she brings us three or five, have been vetted by an independent group of people that had no, you know, like, that is, I don't want to use the word secretive, but it's very, it's very private as they go through these nominations, and she was pretty adamant about the unfairness of just throwing a candidate in at the last minute that did not have to go through that same screening process. So I'm not saying we can't, I'm just saying you have to consider the fact that that is kind of unfair to the other three that rose to the top, or five that rose to the top that were screened by an independent group.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was thinking we had voted on that, but I, I don't recall.
I, I believe we did vote that any board member could add someone who applied, that right, Mr. Doppler?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, you all voted, I mean, so, so if you, if you choose another finalist other than the three, and that person would have to be a candidate that applied, uh, now, now I think, and I mean, I don't know for sure, but I think what, what Ms. Grissom's talking about is, is uh, you know, somebody may not have went all the way through the vetting process, I mean, as a candidate. So she, she can certainly explain that, but I mean, I mean, as far as this board's concerned, that person would have to be an applicant.
Thank you. Okay, so are we all good on that? Great. So now we will move on to our regular agenda at 7:25. Um, board members, you received emails yesterday and also this afternoon, but I wanted to point out that the wording on item six on our um regular session agenda was updated to include approval of the superintendent finalist interview questions and schedule. Also, one of the attachments on item nine A to do with the addendums for our ESER 3.0 application was updated under the section dealing with universal masking, and an agenda item 11E was added for discussion and possible action on the um defense of the mask lawsuit. So, starting off with the agenda, we'll start with um items and contracts. C, one and two, does anybody have any questions on those? Three or four? Five or six? Seven or eight? Moving to board policies. Um, eight A or B? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On policy uh labeled in the agenda, P, sorry, I don't have the whole thing pulled up. I, I'm wondering, I, based on our just conversations, I'm wondering if the intent was to change that to masters required. The change is bachelors required, masters preferred, but I'm just trying to reflect on previous board conversations.
So, yes, that's what we voted on in our last, for this actual candidate. Um, I'm not sure, we, we, we wanted the exact, from the committee meeting, we wanted the qualifications from what we voted on for this, didn't like that, but we can make that change.
Yeah, I think that was the intent, and I don't know who drafted that actual wording, but-
Mr. Doppler?
Yeah, I can, I can address that. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Watson. Uh, so the state law says that a, a bachelor's is the only degree that can be required. So that was the reason for, the reason I changed the wording was that, you know, and, and we can, we can debate on this, but, you know, the state law indicates bachelor's. So, uh, you know, obviously, this system desires somebody with more than a bachelor's, and that's fine, so that was the reason for the wording.
So just to be clear, I think I heard it in your wording, but you said that the state law requires that you, says you can only require up to a bachelor's. Is that correct?
I can, I can pull it up.
Okay. So I, if that's what the law says, I totally get the reason why it was worded that way.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
I believe it says requires only instead of, it, it says that that is the only state requirement.
Right.
Not that it's the only degree that we could require.
So if it, if, if the state law is saying that it's the only requirement, then we could add to that requirement, correct, in policy?
That's, that's where, that's where it's debatable.
Okay.
You know, because, because, because if I were, if I were representing a candidate, I could, I could argue that that state statute says, well, my can't, the, the law says my candidate only has to have a bachelor's.
So, yeah, and it's, it's fine, you're, so you're saying the more cautious way to go in terms of policy is, is to put the preferred, and although when we do hire candidates, we can certainly make it required at that time, like we did this time.
Well, you can, you can make that part of the vetting process, certainly.
So I believe that our uh criteria for TSBA was a master's. So, yeah, that was actually in there. So, most, I guess all the candidates that they bring forth will meet that criteria, right?
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Doppler, should we add language that says specifically that an individual search process might require a higher degree? Or that the board has the authority to require a higher degree in their, in their qualifications? Because I, I don't want our, I don't want our qualifications and our policy to be in conflict.
Yeah, I, it, it's a tough question. I mean, I mean, I don't know that, that, that any court's ever, ever looked at this, but again, I mean, I would, based upon the way the state law reads, you know, a candidate could argue that, that that candidate should at least be able to apply and get a shot just on, just based on a bachelor's. Now, I mean, you know, if this board wants to say, you know, a doctorate's preferred, I think, I think this board could do that, and, and look at a list of candidates and say, well, we've got uh fifteen doctorates, two masters, and one bachelor's, and, and you all can, can create a priority list based upon that. I don't see any legal problem with that, but I do see a legal problem based upon the statute by just saying, we, we require a master's or a, or a doctor.
Thank you, I understand the way you said it that way.
So are we good? Ms. Owen, do you have any more? So, uh, board policies, um, item C or D? Item E? And item F?
We do have public forum on this item? Anyone do anything? Oh, I get confused.
Wednesday night we'll have it first. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, during policy review, I supported having a policy to express our commitment to equity, but I didn't see that our committee reached any kind of consensus at that time, and so I wasn't really expecting to see this policy come up on our agenda. My expectation was that it was going to be reworked, and that we would see it again in policy review and have some more discussion. So um, I, I don't want to limit community forum on this by any means, but I would like to send this back to policy review so that we could have significantly more discussion on the language. There, there's, I, I guess I don't need to get too deeply in it, but my concern is that when we characterize equity, we're really defining it, and this definition of equity is not one that we can find anywhere. It's not backed up by any definitions of equity in, I've looked everywhere. So if we're, if we're looking in just a, a regular dictionary, if we are looking in a British English dictionary, if we are looking in a law dictionary, this definition isn't there. That doesn't necessarily concern me as much as any kind of unintended consequence that could come from this language. And so I think we need to really have an extended time when we can look at this language and have some advice on what kind of unintended impacts this broad definition could have. So if we could send it back to policy review for that discussion, I support having an equity policy, but I think we really need to, really need to dig in and make sure that we are expressing exactly what we mean to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Do we have any other discussion? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to speak to Ms. Owen's point, um, I know that much of that definition, be, only because I served on the committee of it, came from the Alliance for Educational Equity. Um, and I, I know that that language was presented to the board, I think at the retreat in the form of a presentation, it wasn't in the policy at that point. Uh, but that language was there, and I understand your concerns that this might be elevated to policy, and, and so I, I totally get that. Um, if, I, I think we need to have a sense from the, the board as a whole whether or not we intend to, um, I know we're not voting on it tonight, but if we are going to and be considerate of-
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, my question has been, why are we looking at this policy now, why we're in, why are we in such a hurry to, to move forward with it? Um, we have a lot of people who've signed up for public forum, and I feel like that at, in February right now, we need to be focused on hiring a superintendent. That needs to be our focus, and we have way too many big things going on right now, and so that's kind of just my opinion that, that this need, and I agreed, actually, the more I thought about it with Ms. Christie's point, that we should wait on, on doing this, because I think that it, this could open up additional um issues, additional things that, that probably ought to be addressed by when we have new leadership. So that, so that would be my opinion on that.
Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and I hear what you're saying, Ms. Horn, and I hear what you're saying too, um, Ms. Owen. I would just like to say, and kind of in light of both of these, when I came on the board, I was handed a copy of board policies, only to realize, um, so many of these policies had not been initiated or written by the board. And after much study of looking through this packet, uh, I feel like that this policy was conceived and developed in much the same way by central, well, within collaboration with some board members, but um a lot of central office staff and a lot of outside entities, and there's too many to mention, but going through this uh packet, um, Title IX Coordinator and Compliance Officer, their Director of Advancement and Diversity, their Director of School Culture, our Chief Financial Officer, our lawyer, the Executive Director, him, his, he of T E C A, the A E E, and then the one that troubled me even more so a little bit was, and I could not find a name, it only constantly was referenced as my contact in Hamilton County, which uh they were looking at their policy, and Mr. Doppler may want to speak to that. But um, it concerns me that this process began, the earliest I could find was maybe like, you know, oh, November day, I don't know if it began before that, but- but this board as a whole did not get it for policy review until January. And so that concerns me that we had so much input and so much back and forth going on to develop this policy without the full board. So I could support Ms. Owen or Ms. Horn's, both of their positions. And I would like for somebody maybe to send me the answer to who our Hamilton County contact is that I saw throughout this that spoke to their policy. And then also a reference to Ben in here. Who's Ben? I don't know. So those are some of my concerns, and I just thought I needed to express that since the whole policy review thing, what came about after I took my seat on the board in 2014, because of the very reasons I named.
Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that this goes back to policy review, we have a conversation, is this board equipped to provide suggestions on what should go into equity policy? Because I remember at our policy review, we even had questions about what is equity. So I don't know if even this board is even prepared to have a robust discussion at a policy review on what should go into a policy regarding equity. And so I don't want to discredit the work that Central Office did to create this, because we don't know what that means in Knox County schools as board members, from my perspective and my time sitting on this board. And so I thank the experts for giving some type of guidance, but I also can see why we need to go back and have a conversation as a whole board. But I would also like for board members to come prepared with their own research, their own studies about what equity means, and how does that work in Knox County schools.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Even in policy review, I've not yet heard any concerns about this policy in the sense of, is it harmful for kids? I think that's the intent of this policy, is because I think the belief is, both from the disparities of educational work, outcomes, work that we've been doing over the last five or seven years, as long, as well as the strategic plan, one-third of our plan is around eliminating disparities, the work of Central Office, the Alliance for Educational Equity. I think the reason this policy is coming to the board is because of years and years of work. And from my understanding, from what Bob said at policy review, is that they felt like this was the right next step to codify this work long-term. And I under, I, I appreciate the logistical concerns and the timing and all those kinds of things, but what I'd like to know from individual board members is, do you think this policy is harmful for kids? And if so, in which way? Because if it's good for kids, then I think we need to have a real conversation around that and, and, and look at the policy on its merits. The reality is the disparities that we see in educational opportunities for our students are pervasive, and they're not just in Knox County. This is not just a Knox County issue. They're all across the country. And I know there's been many, many things that have led up to those disparities. Very few of those things have we individually or corporately, as this particular board, have had anything to do with. But right now, Bob and this board of nine people are the leaders in this district. And what I would propose is not abdicating our duty till we have another leader in town, but if, but if this is the right policy, because it supports kids and it codifies the work, then I think we need to consider whether or not we need to approve that, because I think it sends unintended messages to folks in the community, when you have people who have invested in this work for the last seven years, and when it comes to the board to codify it in policy, we basically say, we don't think we can do that on a one-page, fairly benign policy. There, there is, I, if there's something controversial in this policy, I would love to know what that is, because I just don't see it there. And I also found that, you know, Ms. Bounds, you, you referenced it, you held up the packet. I find it frankly troubling. In sixteen months of being on this board, I've never seen it happen, that our board members asked for three to four months' worth of emails to figure out how this policy was created. I mean, I, to me, that shows a lack of trust. And I think everybody who's worked on this has been genuine in why they're doing it. Now, whether or not you agree that we need it's one thing, but it's not been out of, I don't think there's any, anybody in the corner that we're trying, that we need to unveil here. So again, I'd love to hear from board members, how is this harmful to kids? How is this policy harmful to kids?
Well, I can speak to the three to four months of emails, and that was because when an email went out to parents back, I believe in early December, saying the district was finalizing an equity policy. I had someone ask me about it, so I asked to see the draft. And I was told we had nothing. And then, and that we wouldn't have anything until the 24th. So then, after Christmas, I asked to see the draft again, and we still had nothing. So that was, actually, I was one of the people that requested that, just so I could see the document. And it really shouldn't be that way. If we had a document, it should have been shared. But just to answer your question, it wa, it wasn't a trust thing, it's just that we told parents we had a draft, and then when I asked to see it, I was told we didn't have a draft. And that's why, that's where those document requests came in, from, from my perspective.
I understand that, and I, I think that request was sent to the whole board, because I remember you making that request. And, and I saw that line in that email, too. It was men, it was not the main subject of the email, but I did see that. I think that was in December or something like that. I don't know, from my perspective, and again, I don't have as much experience as some of you, as some of you all, I don't ever remember getting a policy that's in development until policy review. Like, I, I just don't remember seeing early iterations of it. So I guess I wasn't surprised that it wasn't produced if it was still currently being worked on. But again, that's just a logistical thing.
Yeah, I don't think we typically send out an email to 60,000 parents saying that we have.
So, Ms. Owen, did you have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To, to kind of answer Ms. Satterfield's question, I, I think we can come prepared if we have everything in advance. My concern, and looking at, at all of these different, different definitions of equity that we could have, my thinking is that if we don't define it very clearly, what we mean, then what we would end up with is a court defining it for us. And one definition that I was looking at is from the National Equity Project, and it says that educational equity means that each child receives what they need to develop to their full academic and social potential. What does that mean, and what could that cost? That seems to me like it could potentially have an exorbitant cost that there's no way we could fulfill. And at that point, if, if we have not defined carefully, and that exorbitant cost comes back to us, then that is where harm to students would happen, because those costs have to be transferred from somewhere. So my concern is that we very carefully and intentionally find language that we both mean, that we support, and that that we believe does not have legal consequences or potential legal consequences.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As far as defining it, you know, we've heard two board members just say that they didn't, they weren't sure of what the definitions. And I think from, from things I've heard, it could mean one thing locally and something entirely different in other places or particularly on the national level. Now, equity and equality are not the same thing. We, I think we could probably agree on that, but, you know, if, in reference to something Ms. Owen said over there about a court deciding a definition, I'm not sure that we could write some kind of definition to put in at this time that will be all comprehensive and cover everything. And we certainly don't need to be in court with them defining or telling us what, what they think it means. I think we should, my personal feelings are that we should leave it alone for right now. You know, if we don't, we want to go back and, and when we get the new superintendent and work with them and staff and everything, and come up with something that we, that the board, the majority of the board consider satisfactory, then I think that would be okay. But in its present form, because of the uncertainty of it, I just, I can't support this. I mean, when two board members tell you that they, they're not sure what it means, you know, if you want to.
No, I just want to make a clarification. I'm not sure as the whole board knows what equity is. So I support thus getting one understanding. I understand what equity means and how it serves the schools.
I know you do.
But as a board, I don't think we have a clear understanding. So I agree on that aspect.
Okay. Well, I just, I just don't believe I could, I can support it at this time, because I think it is, regardless of what Mr. Watson said, I, I don't, it's so comprehensive, or it could be so comprehensive, that I don't know that we can, we can develop something. Now, as far as does it hurt kids, you asked that question. I don't think it hurts kids, but are, are we going to, if, if we adopted a policy, are we going to try to spend enough money to make sure that there is equity in outcomes? Is that what you, is that what you want?
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so I, I think equity and outcomes, that's even scratched out. We talked about that at the policy review and changed that to equitable opportunities. I, I actually don't know that many people believe everybody should end up in the exact same place. I just, I don't think that's the way life works.
No, it doesn't.
Can I speak? Thank you, Mr. McMillan. So I think it really is about opportunities, and what's interesting in this conversation tonight, we've all been talking about equity even before this policy. When we talked about the Ford NGL work, that was an equity conversation. When Mr. Jen was asking all of his questions, that was an equity conversation. What's interesting is, most of us in life, even if we don't know the definition of it, we want equity for ourselves. And what that means is, I want the things that I need based on my circumstances, the way I grew up, the way I identify, the challenges I've experienced, my aptitudes. I need certain things that are different than you because of the where I'm trying to end up, where I want to get to be. And that's what all equity is, because what we have acknowledged is that if we give everybody something equal, we're not all starting out in the same place, and we're not all trying to end up in the same place. So what ends up happening is, you get disparities like we see in our system. And so we do the work of equity all the time, and our Disparities in Educational Outcomes Task Force originally came up with thirty-six recommendations based on data that you all have access to. It's publicly available on our website. Thirty-four of those have been completed or are in work because they're the kind of thing that never ends. And so as all systems work has progressed, then the administration and that steering committee said, now, how do we continue to move this work forward? And so they developed the Alliance for Educational Equity. And Nathan Langeloyes and Brianna and others within the district, and she's an attorney, said, how do we then align this to the work, both at a federal level through ESA, Every Student Succeeds Act, and the Tennessee Leaders for Equity Playbook? And so, and the reason they did that is because that steering committee, the Alliance for Educational Equity, needs a guiding light. They need to know, what are we going to focus our energies in? And so what they said is, it makes the most sense to align it to ESA and what the State Department of Ed has said, which is why these seven commitments are in here. Decreasing chronic absenteeism, reducing disproportionate suspension expulsion rates, increasing student early post-secondary ed opportunities, providing equitable access to effective teachers, recruiting and retaining the teach, uh, teach, a diverse teaching force, embed cultural awareness in our schools, and partnering with community allies. So the six equity teams that are involved in the Alliance for Educational Equity, which are at, within the district and also embedded in the community, they're saying, we need to know how to focus our work. Well, guess who they look to to know how to focus their work? The board. That's, that's why this policy is here tonight. Because they're saying to us, we want to work for you. We want to help our students. We want to help eliminate those disparities in our district. But the work has been at play now for six, seven years, and we're looking for you for our cue. And what I'm concerned about is knowing how many people have been passionate and involved in this work. If this board doesn't give a cue, it sends an unintentional signal that we don't value your participation in the work. Because at the end of the day, it doesn't matter who's sitting in Bob's seat. This entity, this board, is the one that is supposed to lay the direction for the future of Knox County schools. And then, and we hire a superintendent to do that. And frankly, I want to know if we're committed to this work before I make a vote on the 22nd. Because I want to give a clear signal to that superintendent that we want you to continue this work of equity in our community. We want you to continue this work of eliminating disparities in our community. And I will tell you, if any one of those candidates is not for that, I can't support them.
So, Ms. Owen, but, but before we get to you, I would like to get a good feel for if the majority of the board is wanting to go back to policy review with this or proceed. So after we have the discussion, if you can just, everybody kind of weigh in on that, so we'll know how to proceed on Wednesday with it.
I believe I actually had the, had the floor, and, and I gave it up.
I'm sorry, Mr. McMillan.
That's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to, to ask Mr. Watson there, if, do you think, you talked about these seven, the, the seven things that are listed there, do you believe that with a new superintendent, we could not continue to work on them, or do you believe we're not working on them? Do you believe the staff is not working on them at the present time? Or, or do you think that they're just ignoring? I want him to answer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do believe they're working on it. I serve on that committee, and I see their hard work. And I know when people are in the systems and they're working toward an end, they want to see that the leaders of that system support them in that end. That's what, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, okay. I don't want a lengthy answer. I just wanted to know what you believe that we were working on it. I think we're, we're doing a pretty good job as best we can with the monies that we've, that we've been given and with the positions that we could create. And I believe whoever our new superintendent is will take a look at that. There's nothing to prevent that person from moving forward on those if the majority of the board directs them to do so. So that's why I think, since it's, it's come up, I think it's unnecessary at this particular time. Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Mr. Dubler, and I apologize, I haven't asked this before. We have at least nine other policies that very directly mention. We have at least nine other policies that very directly mention equity. If we define equity in C two sixty, could that impact the other nine policies that also address equity?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Owen. I, I'd have to look up C two sixty.
That's the one we're talking about now, the equity policy. So if we define it, if we define it differently than, than the legal definition, if we define it here, could that impact our other nine policies? Do we need to go back and look at those two?
So the problem is what you stated earlier, which is what's the legal definition of equity? And when one looks up the legal definition of equity, it doesn't mean what, what, what it's, what it's stating in this proposed policy. It talks about courts of equity. It goes back to old England law and, you know, what you, what happens when there's not a remedy, uh, a common law, that's what, that's what legally equity talks about. Further, uh, this board has policies for equal educational opportunities. I've had those since the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, since, um, you know, Title Nine was, came into play in nineteen seventy-two. So, you know, what do you do with that as well? I mean, you know, because basically if you're, if you're talking about categories, protected categories, race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex or disabilities, if you are treating somebody differently, then is that discriminatory? Those are the legal considerations.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I was looking back at my notes from our policy review meeting. And I think to Ms. Owen's point, I have quite, I have probably five or six questions on here that say, what is, what does this mean? What does this plan to address? What, does this mean moving staff? I mean, I think this opens up more questions than answers. And I, and I also, in just reviewing this packet, you know, just for this week, you know, we do have the educational, um, the equal educational opportunities, J one-ten, that, you know, as Mr. Dupler just, just talked about. So I think this policy just opens up more questions than it answers. And I'm concerned about what it could lead to. And I think that as Mr. McMillan made the point, definitions right now are changing every single day. The words don't mean the same thing from week to week. So, um, I think that, I just think this, this is not, um, where, where we need to be right now on a policy, um, of this sort.
Ms. Satterfield?
Yeah, um, and I hear you loud and clear. And there's not going to be too much rebuttal there, but I do have a question. If you have your central office, the people who work for superintendent, who works for us, asking for clarity from the leadership on what direction do we need to go in? How do we guide them?
I think we have, we have our, I think we expect as a board, we expect them to be following our strategic plan. And we're doing a lot, I'm not, we're doing most all these things are being addressed. I think every single one of them. But I think we, we expect for them to follow the strategic plan and a lot of these elements are in there. I think the issue is, back to Ms. Owen's point, this opens up a lot more questions and possible problems than, than it helps.
And I don't dispute that, right? I'm cool with going back. We have that in the strategic plan. The strategic plan has been in existence for, what, five years now, four years, et cetera? And we still have stark disparities in Knox County schools. So there's something that's, this is something that's not connecting. And while we have equity and people are doing equity, doing this work for years before, don't, don't need a policy to do the work, right? I think about Boma Magnet, they're doing the work, don't need us to guide them. We have schools in our county that are not doing it. And so a policy flat out says, everybody's expected to do it in this way because this is the board's expectation for everyone in Knox County schools. And so while we do have communities that's doing it well, we do not, we have communities that are not doing it well. So this is just a guiding light when we have a policy. Now, what that policy says, I'm cool with us as a board figuring it out and pulling in from other policies as well. But we don't have a guiding light in Knox County schools to make sure everybody is infusing equity within our district.
Well, I, once again, I think strategic plan needs to be doing that. But I think we have, we still have a difference of definitions. I think that when Mr. McMillan mentioned, um, equitable outcomes, we, that's, that's a definition issue that we may have a disconnect with what we're saying and what the community is saying. Because there's, we can't, we cannot guarantee any kind of outcome. We, we just can't. I mean, that's not reasonable. And so there's a, there's an example of a disconnect between what we may think and what the community may think. So, um, I, I just think that, I think that there may be other issues at play that could be addressed with what you said about the disparities that are still there. And I, I don't even, you know, I'm not, there's, we have ninety schools. So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of people at play, a lot of issues at play that could be individual issues. But I think that the district has put a lot of things in place. I think they're following the strategic plan, which is what we expect for them to do.
Okay, so I believe I'm hearing, um, the majority of the board would support sending this back to policy review. Is that, is that correct? Ms. Bab, I don't, Ms. Henderson, I don't think.
If you want me to weigh in, I, I unfortunately...
We can't take a vote, sorry.
We can't take a vote. Uh, but I unfortunately could not be at the policy review and, um, have had a lot of questions and, Lord, we've had a lot of people that decided to weigh in, really on one side, thinking we were being bullied by another side, which was actually sort of ironic, um, because I actually felt bullied on one side because of that. Um, but I, you know, I think the fact that we have this many questions that I, you know, I did not get to be at policy review, so I didn't know it. But, Lord, I'm realizing how many pro, like, I think policy review is the place to discuss it. And, you know, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Watson, but I feel like you're trying to push it. Like, if we don't do this this month, then we're just failing everybody. But I think we're failing people if we don't really have more discussion when there's this much problem. Um, because like I said, I couldn't be at the policy review, so I don't know what's going on. But just from the discussion tonight, I'm realizing how many different points of view there are, how many of these bullet points that some people think are just concrete and clear as can be or not by other people. And that's what policy review is for, where we really have discussion of it. So, um, I, if we're voting on it, I guess, next week, then I would, I would probably say I would support to go back to policy review.
So what would need to happen if somebody would have to make the motion on Wednesday to do that? And then we would take a vote? Ms. Satterfield?
Yes, and I just want to, and I'm cool with that. Board member's responsibility is to govern the superintendent, manage the budget and create policy. So if we have this come back to the policy review, please come with suggestions so that we can create the policy and not central offices. Input was from central office because they're doing the work and they're telling, they're telling us this is what we need. But board member's responsibility is to create a policy. So let's create a policy.
And, and I guess the one other thing I'd say is we've had many policies that we have decided to send back to policy review. I mean, this is not like an original thing. And this is big, I mean, I think everybody says, I mean, it's, it's a big discussion. If we're gonna pass it, we want to do something that people can feel good about, not feel pressured one way or the other by some side sending me more emails than another side, which that doesn't work for me, to be honest. I don't keep tallies of emails. Um, never have, never will. And, um, I just think, and it doesn't even necessarily mean one policy review will get it right. Policy review, we don't, and this is where I think the public gets really confused. We can't talk about this stuff in a lot of venues. And a lot of times, these school board meetings are not a good place to have really healthy discussion about important stuff. And to me, just the amount of questions that have come up tonight makes me realize those questions did not get answered in the last policy review. And I don't know if they'll get invited in the next one. But I mean, I, I do, I mean, I agree with, um, Ms. Satterfield. People need to come prepared with their questions. If we want people, staff people to come discuss it with us, I think we need to be asking for that at the next policy review. But from everything I'm hearing tonight, I don't think with any confidence people can vote one way or the other about this.
And the cell phone policy comes to mind when you say review. I mean, so it isn't unusual to do that. You are right. So moving on to grants, um, any questions on nine A or B? C or D? Item E. Ms. Bass?
Um, I want the board to be aware, um, that Wednesday night, I intend to make a motion and I would like to kind of tell the board, um, what that motion is so they'll know on Wednesday night. So a motion to reiterate that Knox County schools is substantially complying with a court ordered mask mandate and to state...
Which one are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, are we doing the charter review?
You skipped the whole section. Your page is stuck together.
I just want to go home, thank you.
Your, the page is stuck together. That's on the next one.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry. But, but when we get to that one, I'll, I'll get you first. Okay. So item, um, contracts, ten A or B?
Down, I think it talks about, um, regular agenda items B and C. Um, it sounds like looking at those that maybe the hall's high school exterior upgrades change along the way. And so maybe if we could just talk about that a little bit.
Mr. Oakes?
Yes, ma'am. All three of those items are related to one another. And, uh, this, uh, project started off a couple of years ago as, as part of the capital plan. And we've added funds and the scope of the thing has changed over time. Our, our original intent was just to take a, a look at how to clean up the exterior of the building. And then we found out that there were some parts of the building that, uh, we couldn't, uh, clean up in detail without, uh, damage to it. And then we have found other areas where we had some water intrusion and some, and some degradation, uh, to the, to the facility. So the scope of the project sort of creeped up on us. And as we've gone back and looked at it, uh, where we are now in order to clean up, uh, you know, the appearance of the building and, uh, and to, uh, address the, uh, the fact that we've got, uh, significant, I think, window problems there, is this project is, is now to replace the, the windows at the school and then to, uh, add some cladding, uh, metal cladding, uh, that would, uh, cover some of the aggregate or cover the aggregate cast stone that is part of the building and that is, uh, beginning to, uh, deteriorate. So that's, that's what we're, uh, going for with this contract. Over that period of time, we have in the budget two million dollars for this project. Uh, we've, uh, the, as the project has, uh, the scope has changed. It's required some additional work for the architects. So it means we need to pay the architects for that additional work. So that is, uh, the amendment to the architectural contract that is in the next section. And then the, uh, uh, fund balance designation for seven hundred thousand is to get us to where we can afford the roughly two point five million dollars that the project, uh, will cost as, as we've gotten to what the current scope of the project is.
Thank you. I just, I could tell something had changed over time, um, just reading through it. And, and then I just know just labor and, um, materials costs has gone up astronomically.
This, this was one of those things that we started that was really a cosmetic and has turned into, uh, more than that as we sort of peel back layers of the onion and, and want to address it appropriately.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Russ answered my question. It was just that all that was tied together, the three items that are on there, including the architect, means it will spend, uh, in, over three million dollars.
No, sir. No, sir, the, the, the architect's part of the, uh, part of the budget in this.
It says an increase of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where, where is it in, included? Is it in the...
It's a, it's, we have a contract...
In the original?
In the original contract with the architect that was, that was, you know, in, in which we engaged probably a year ago.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with it. I just, I just want to be able to understand it. It, the, the fee would, would, would come out of, uh, what's listed there, uh, in, uh, ten A?
Let me, let...
Two million four hundred and nine four thousand?
Let, let, let me do a little math here. And this, this is dangerous territory, you know, doing math in public. But, but we had, we originally had two million dollars, uh, that the board had approved for this project. Out of that, we've, we have taken the architectural fees to, which would include the increase in the architectural fee that we're recommending here. And then the seven hundred thousand dollars will take us from that roughly one point eight million dollars that's remaining and the, out of the two million to cover the two point five million that is the current construction bid on that project.
And Mike, if you'll look at eleven C, there's like a letter from, um, Lewis that kind of details a lot of costs.
Okay, okay. I didn't, I didn't look at that. I mean, I was just looking at the, at the numbers there. It, uh, it gives the appearance that, that they're separate items. So it talks about the increase. I, I'm sorry, I didn't look at the, at the letter. I didn't realize that that was a part of the original part, so it wouldn't be...
I'm, I'm sorry if we weren't clear on that.
That's fine. Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the, the grand total is two point five? Is that correct? Approximately?
No, the grand, the grand total would, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it would be, yeah, two point five.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on a technical issue, because the sixty-eight, or the sixty-seven thousand is referenced in item eleven B within that seven hundred thousand, I would just change the order of those. It seems odd to vote on an item that has that number in the detail, but then be asked to vote on that detail next. So I would just split B and C in the agenda for tomorrow when we vote. This would be my recommendation.
Okay. And...
Wednesday, yes, whenever.
I, I would like, I'd like to...
The day we come back.
I'd like to correct myself, uh, too. And, and Doug?
Is he still here?
Nope. Okay. I, the, the original budget was, was two million dollars out of which we've paid architectural fees. We're adding seven hundred thousand to that. So what our total for the project would be two point seven, not two point five.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're good on that? So that would, so under contracts, item C? Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I missed, I guess I missed item B. Can we just have a little quick, um, explanation of item B? If that's a new contract and the purpose for that?
Mr. McPherson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, uh, actually, yes, this is a new contract, um, and, and it is budgeted. Yeah, um, so this is actually software to automate many of our accounts payable and business-related functions. Um, it cuts down on a lot of manual tasks. There's some built-in accountability here as well, um, for compliance to contracts. And, and also, there are also policy controls that, that are built into, to this particular software. And it reduces risks associated with manual processing and it creates audit transparencies as well. So, um, anyway, it's more about, it, it's, it's far more effective than manual processing, but it's also, uh, create, it'll create a lot of efficiencies in the department as well. It also speeds up payment processing. And so there's a lot of features with this particular software that we, we think are really good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had meant to ask, I'm glad you asked the same question. But also I was wondering, it has a, um, year one cost and a year two cost. Is there costs after that or is it paid off in two years?
Oh, this, this would be ongoing, but there's a, there's a, uh, there's kind of a, what, an implementation cost, right, initially too?
So like the first year is high, but probably years going forward are more like a hundred and sixteen thousand?
That's, I think so. I'm gonna, I'm, I'll double check with their, with their, uh, Director of Business Services, but that's my understanding. If that's not the case, I will correct that.
Okay, and I mean, I'm sure there may be yearly increases, but I would just...
Right.
That was just my big question because there was just a year one and a year two on there.
Yes, typically there's going to be, that, that, the... Yes, typically, there's going to be, that, the difference between the 452 and the 116, that's just the implementation cost of that and then going forward is probably going to be more like 116 or, you know, there could be slight inflationary increase. Right.
So, any questions on ten C under contracts? So, moving to regular agenda items and a couple of these have already been discussed, but eleven A or B? C or D? So, eleven E, and before, before I get to you, Ms. Bounds, I will, just a background. So, of course, the board did receive the email from the Law Department on Saturday and there were some, I know I personally had some back and forths with the Law Department over that and I'm assuming by a follow-up email, other board members had questions as well. And in that email, he said that, you know, the board does need to have some public discussion on how we would want them to proceed with the request that the plaintiffs made as far as mask compliance. And also, I called Superintendent Thomas and we felt this would be a good week to discuss it. So, that is how this landed on the agenda tonight, just to give some background history on that. And I apologize for springing on everybody late, but we all know sometimes it's hard to get everybody together for special called meetings, so we kind of felt like it would be better to discuss it sooner rather than later. And with that, Ms. Bounds, if you would like to continue?
Let me start over. Yeah. Well, when I read the most recent request from the plaintiffs, I intended to bring a motion tonight to be made on Wednesday for possible action and then you added this for discussion, so I'm very appreciative of you doing that. My motion Wednesday night, and I hope there will be the votes to support it, will be a motion to reiterate that Knox County Schools is substantially complying with a court ordered mask mandate and to state there is no need to acquiesce to the most recent demands of the plaintiffs in this case. Specifically, the Knox County Board of Education, one, will not agree to the appointment of a neutral monitor for schools, two, will not submit a compliance plan as stated by the plaintiffs, and three, will not agree to a three-person compliance committee chosen by the plaintiffs, KCE, KCS, and others. So, that is the motion that I will bring to the board on Wednesday night. I hope the votes are there. I think enough is enough. When I read these most recent demands, I think they go above and beyond the mask mandate. That is the motion, but I do want to explain that I do not think that it is a good idea to send a neutral monitor that has the authority to make unannounced visits to any Knox County School and extracurricular activities and report back. Neither do I think it is a good idea of identifying monitors for each school that includes random visits, a complaint procedure, training for proper masking, and a system of discipline. And the same thing is true with a compliance committee, so I think it sends a very bad message to our students and our parents and our teachers that we are sending people in to spy and to monitor on them and I think it's totally unacceptable, so.
So, do we have any other discussion? And I would like to add, I know we were all very frustrated probably today in executive session and that might be an understatement. And I do have some concerns in my bringing requests on Wednesday. You know, I, having a child that had a severe speech impairment, I do have concerns that we have, and I checked with Mr. Myers today, 3,353 students in the district that are currently getting speech services, but they do not have mask exemptions. And speech impairments are actually recognized under the ADA and I do think that we need to offer these students exemptions as well and I would like for the Law Department to pursue a blanket exemption for these students. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my question is for Mr. Oaks. Do we still have funds available for, for supplies like masks for students?
Yes, ma'am. We can get whatever we want, whatever we need and we have plenty of masks on hand right now and we replenish that as the need arises.
Of those funds, would it be possible to order some that have the clear front?
If we can, if we can find them, we could, you know, certainly do that. I don't know, you know, what the efficacy of those is or are.
There's a disposable version, too, so I can, I can send you those and that way, maybe there wouldn't have to be so many exemptions if they had those available also.
I would like to get them out of these masks as soon as possible. I think a year and a half's long enough and it's just going to further delay those. And, you know, I do have concerns that they can't see their teachers' mouths, too. I mean, that's part of it, too. It's not just, you know, the teachers needing to see their face. You know, they need to see other people's faces when they speak, too, and it just really bothers me. I just, I feel like we're discriminating against these students by not giving them mask exemptions. So, I, with the board's support, and that's something everybody can think about, I would ask that you support them pursuing those exemptions for those 3,353 students. Ms. Bab?
Sure, and, you know, this is a difficult subject and it's, once again, I'm gonna bring up, we don't ever have an opportunity to talk about this and this has kind of been the first opportunity that we could discuss it. You know, and one of the things I'll bring up is back when we first started talking about this at the beginning of the year, I did, I was, were doing a mask mandate only because I wanted us to have control over it. Because I, I do think, you know, when we were first starting school, Delta was taking off and people were scared about it, but then it dipped. And, you know, my, my impression and what my, my mind was, was it would be great if we could control it, if we thought it was bad, if conditions in the community were bad, then we could have masks and then when it wasn't so bad, you know, we could take away that thing. And I think what I find very frustrating about this lawsuit is, and I know everybody else in the world is finding the same thing, I'm sure there are a few people who disagree, is there is no end to this and we are seeing, you know, we're seeing, we were talking about it earlier, there are states that have had mandates that have gotten rid of them, there are countries that have had mandates that have gotten rid of them. And as Knox County Schools, and I realize right now Omicron is very prevalent, we have a lot of cases, but if Knoxville follows the trend of the rest of the world, it will dramatically start going down. We don't know when that's going to happen, but it will. And there are some predictions that, you know, then it might just even be treated as the common cold. We don't know that yet and, you know, once again, that's for scientists to determine. But with this lawsuit, our kids are still in masks no matter what's going on in the environment and I think that's what I find very frustrating. One thing I would love, and once again, this would have to be a consideration of the board and I know there are very different thoughts on our board, is I would love to have initiated talks and I've brought this up, is mediation with the plaintiffs to see if there is any kind of end game. And I don't know that there's support on our board about that because that, that is to me, I want, I'm hearing from parents of like, when does this end? And we're, we don't know and I mean, that's what, and one thing I think we need to let people out there know. I mean, we as a board do not know when this is going to end and we, right now, have no control over it. And I would love to at least have conversations and those conversations might, might end in something that we cannot agree to, that we don't want to agree to, but I would love for us just to try and see if we can get somewhere. So, that's, and so I might also, and it might not go forward, but I probably will put something forward to ask our attorneys if they could try to initiate mediation or conversations with the plaintiffs.
Yeah, I agree and, I mean, just the frustration of it, I mean, I don't think that the general public realizes how the charter government set up that, yes, we are the defendants, but we have very little say in, in how we are being defended. You know, they think that we are directing the Law Department to do this or directing the Law, and that is simply not the case. And, you know, I said it in executive session, my response to the plaintiffs would have been very different than the Law Department's response and, I'm sorry, Gary.[1241.12][1241.12](Laughter) But it would happen. But I, I just don't think people understand that, you know, we're not deliberating in there, we're not calling the shots, you know, sometime, I mean, we, we hear about it as things are happening and pretty much when everybody else kind of hears about it. So, that, that is a frustration. Did you want to, did you want to speak to that, Gary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I mean, I'll say what I can. Obviously, there's not a whole lot I can say due to active litigation. As you've, as you've stated, the charter enables our office to defend this board and this board was sued and we are defending the board. We, we have to go upon what the board as a whole decides. So, I think that's part of this board's frustration because you, I mean, you're nine individual members, you have different thoughts on this lawsuit and a lot of other issues and until you make a decision officially in public, it's hard for us to know which direction you all want to go. You all made a decision before the fall semester to remove masks, so we have been defending you on future, then, then, then we will certainly, you know, look at that decision and, and defend your decision because that's our, that's our job. So, I mean, that's what I would say. I mean, I can also say that the superintendent has been, has been pushing out messages with our cooperation and, you know, this thing is appealed up to the Sixth Circuit and, you know, the briefing schedule has been completed. The Sixth Circuit will issue a decision. Some people have the misperception that they already issued a decision, that was a very preliminary motion, they did not consider all the facts. So, so the Sixth Circuit will issue a decision sometime, hopefully in the near future and then, and then we'll go from there. The only thing I would, I would say about the recent motion is that we'll respond to that and to the plaintiff's attorneys and to the new sentinel, our office has not been dishonest. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I agree with Virginia's plan of having mediation. I think it's ridiculous that the attorneys, that the Law Department has not reached out to this plaintiff and sat down with these plaintiffs. And five minutes ago, California just lifted their indoor mask mandate, one of the most blue states. Delaware lifted theirs, New Jersey, Connecticut, Denver, all blue states. And here our children are, I'm a parent with a child with dyslexia that wears glasses and she is still in a mask two years later. Her reading is suffering, she's in fifth grade and reads on a third grade level right now. What is that going to look like in sixth grade? We need to get these kids out of these masks immediately. Thank you.
So, if, you know, the board just comes prepared with whatever they want us to collectively consider Wednesday, then we can move forward from there. Okay? So, Ms. Henderson, you were done, right?
Also, want to say there's several articles that have come out today, in the past couple days, from experts, medical experts from Harvard who have been advocating for masks all along and this past week are saying universal masking is no longer the answer. Thank you.
All right, and so, board members, we, this concludes our regular agenda items. We had several people signed up for public forum. Do we need a quick break before we proceed with that? So, do we want to do 10, 15 minutes? We'll come back at 8:45.
Not a minute late.
For Ms. Satterfield. So, we will be moving on to public forum, and with that, Ms. Satterfield, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we prepare for public forum, I want to let everyone know that when you come to the podium, please state your name and county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak. We will make sure we stay within those three-minute barriers, so please be respectful when we call the next name up. And with that, we will start with Jamie Singer. You have, uh, name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. My name is Jamie Singer, I live in Knox County, and my child attends Bearden High School. I'm also a member of the Smoky Mountain District United Methodist Women's Leadership Team. The United Methodist Women is a faith-based organization that has been advocating for children in education for over 150 years. We are supportive of and endorse the proposed equity policy. Recently, we learned that this effort at Knox County Schools is eight years old. Last month, we held an event where we shared your data from the school system with other United Methodist Women across East Tennessee. Interesting, your data indicates that the largest indicator for suspension is not being a member of a disadvantaged group, but being economically disadvantaged, which is not a protected group. It was clear that students in KCS have already benefited from the effort of this committee, and is appropriate now to build on this success by formalizing the policy. On your way here tonight, you may have noticed signs in many places of worship on Kingston Pike that say, "Love your neighbor." As women of faith, we know that love bridges all differences. We couldn't help but think that this effort to come together is in complete agreement with Knox County Schools' equity efforts. In fact, if you combine the two concepts of formalizing the equity policy and loving your neighbor, we can reduce it to a simple math equation, equity plus love equals student success. We applaud the Knox County Schools and the School Board for supporting policies that recognize the address and address challenges individual students may face. We trust you to identify innovative pathways to student success that can be applied across the entire school system. After all, these children in your care are the future leaders of this community. We ask you for a positive vote in support of the equity policy at your Wednesday meeting, and thank you so much for your service to Knox County.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Pat Bellingrath. Pat Bellingrath, say your name, county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Pat Bellingrath, and I am from Knox County. I am here to speak to you today, tonight, as a United Methodist Woman, a representative of the Tennessee Valley District, and as someone who cares deeply for all students in Knox County. I, and the hundreds of other United Methodist Women in this area, area, are advocating for the approval and implementation of the equity and education policy, because it is the right and fair thing to do for students of this county. United Methodist Women have long promoted inclusion and equity, and our work is about standing up and making our voices heard, and helping others raise theirs. We believe education, equal access to resources and opportunities for all children, is a fundamental right, and that the needs of all students must be met and their success is guaranteed. In our communities where disparities, disparities affect so many, let's do everything in our power to create a school policy that addresses and embraces our diversities and all that they mean. Diversity doesn't need to mean inequity or inequality. Let's help our students be successful so that our community can benefit from these successes. And by addressing inequity in education, other areas such as discipline may also see significant improvement. Let's be an example of lifting up all our students so that access to an equitable education is a certainty in their lives. A certainty that they will, that, that will impact their lives in many positive ways. This policy can be the difference between long-lasting success and a life filled with hardship and severe challenges. The educational success of each child is paramount, and this policy will go a long way in addressing this. We ask that this policy be implemented so that each and every child will be an example of equity plus love equals success. A lot of us want change, but do not always like the process of change. But we can do this, so let's work together for the sake of our children. We know everyone here has the best interest of all Knox County children at heart. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Reverend Catherine Nance. Reverend Catherine, next, Nance, you have three minutes, and state your name and county of residence.
Thank you so much. My name is Catherine Nance, I am also a United Methodist Woman. I am the Senior Minister at Church Street United Methodist Church, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you, just from hearing you work tonight, for having the well-being of all our children at the forefront. I am grateful for the work that many have already done on the equity and education policy, and what a relief and what a gift it would be for a new school superintendent to have this presented to them on day one, to say, "This is who we are. We want to work together with intentionality and goals and training so that all our children will have access to academic success," and to say to a new superintendent, "Carry on and, uh, lead us under this banner." As a clergy person, as a person of faith, I believe in that song that many of us learned in Sunday School or Vacation Bible School, "God loves little children, all the children of the world, red, yellow, black, and white, they are precious in God's sight." But treating children fairly and equitably is more than a sentiment or a song, it is the core of who we are as citizens, believing that we are all created equal. We do not all have the same gifts, we come from a variety of backgrounds and cultures, but public education is the foundation of a society that believes all citizens should have opportunity to participate, to learn, and to better themselves. I'm a graduate from public schools, and my children went to Farragut High School. The equity and education policy will ensure that the goals from Every Student Succeeds Act and the Tennessee Succeeds are always present. You have had the data before you about the disproportionate numbers of children, children of color, and children who are economically disadvantaged, who are experiencing chronic absenteeism and suspension and expulsion. When cho- when a child is not in school, they are missing valuable time that we know is nearly impossible to make up. I know that our teachers and our administrators do have students' best interests at heart. This policy will serve as a daily beacon, a guiding light, and a reminder to all of us about the intentionality of offering all children encouragement, opportunity, and resources. Many have been working on this policy and gathering data for years, and I applaud you for that work. Now is the time to formalize this policy. As a citizen of Knox County, I want all of our children to believe that they are not only precious, but they are valued by their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Gordon Gibson. Gordon Gibson, if you can say your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm Gordon Gibson, a Knox County resident. Uh, I came here tonight to ask you to vote for the equity policy. It sounds as though that is going to go back to policy review for further clarification. I encourage you to get that clarification quickly, and get this policy passed. I, I think it's important so that we don't have to refer to the Alliance for Educational Something or Other, but can really work on educational equity. I did not come tonight prepared to speak about the, uh, recent legal, legal activity about masking.
Mr. Gordon, if you could stay on the task of the, what you presented, which was the policy, the equity policy?
Well, I was speaking to something else that came up on the, you know, tonight, may I?
Okay. Okay, cool. Go ahead, go ahead, I apologize, just trying to stay in order.
Okay. I, I spent some time as a federal investigator on civil matters. Sometimes, when your hand has been caught in the cookie jar, it's just as well to say, "You caught us. Here's how we will do better in the future." Might be a good idea here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Phyllis Nichols.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Nichols, and I'm the President/CEO of the Knoxville Area Urban League. I, first of all, want to thank you for your service as a member of the Knox County School Board. Statesman and Tennessee Senator Howard Baker said, "If you really want to serve the community, then get a job in public service by serving on your local school board." I've had the privilege of working with the last four superintendents, and many other individuals who have sat in your seat, and I truly believe that our collective goal has been to improve public education in our district to benefit all students. There's one phrase that I have heard repeatedly over the last 20 years, and I believe I should repeat it again tonight, because you say "all" means "all." It has become a phrase without any kind of action behind it. My comments have changed because of the change here tonight, and your, uh, that, that you have changed not to vote on the policy on Wednesday, but to study it. I will tell you that I have devoted the better part of my professional career studying equity in education in Knox County, the state of Tennessee, and across the nation. A, a booklet that I have, one of the authors are, that has been referenced here, The Tennessee Leaders for Equity, the Playbook 2.0, I have worked for the last six years, this is our second edition. One of the reasons I want to bring that up is because we are caught up here in Knoxville around the term equity. I've seen many policies go through this body very quickly. Why is it that we are stuck on not being able to move forward on the term equity? Because people across the state, school board leaders, uh, field in education, our people who are preparing teachers in the pipeline, our governor's office, our former governor's office, and also our Department of Education came around, coalesced, and worked on a, uh, equity definition. And in the field of education, equity means that every student has access to effective teachers and resources. I want to tell you that we've kicked this can down the road for too long, and if you need to study to make a wise, intentional decision, I hope that you will do so. But I want to leave you with the words of Dr. Martin Luther King, who said, "We must use time creatively, in the knowledge that the time is always right to do right." And I urge you to do what's right now to adopt the equity policy for the students in Knox County. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Joe Maddux. Next, we'll have Joe Maddux. State your name and county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Joe B. Maddux, I'm pastor of the New Hope Mission, I'm about to
My name is Joe B. Maddux. I'm pastor of the New Hope Mission about church here in Knox County. I live in Knox County. And I'm also a member of Justice Knox Ministry. I want to commend you for the work that you've done with regard to at least looking at an equity policy for Knox County schools. And we encourage you to, to approve one and implement one. Approve it because it addresses a most important issue: equity. And implement it because regardless of how good it is, if it's not implemented, it has no power. We may have to clarify some language if you need to do that, but as it is written, it lays the groundwork for reducing disparities and suspensions and discipline in our schools. I certainly cannot comprehend for the life of me why any fair-minded person would not want to see all of our children having a fair opportunity to be educated. Through Justice Knox House meetings, we have heard many stories about how Black, Brown, Poor, and Special Needs kids are being treated unfairly and more harshly than that kind of parts. The results of disparities, suspension, and discipline actually manifest themselves in the pipeline to schools, in the streets, and even in the cemetery. Inequities in our schools is a reality. It's not an imaginary thing. The data from nineteen, from 2007 and 2016 report, and it documents inequities in our schools. Facts don't lie. For 15 years, the needle did not move. That's a big issue. We have the ability, we have the aptitude to figure this thing out if we want to. We are some smart people, you are some smart people. Justice Knox is a consortium of 20 congregations totaling about 10,000 people in our community. And we just need to make sure that we, make sure that all kids are created or rather treated fairly. They want to be treated fairly, they want to see their friends and their fellow students treated fairly, and we can no longer delay this change.
Thank you. Next we'll have Courtney Shea.
Thank you, Superintendent, for what you've done.
Next we'll have Courtney Shea. State your name and county of residence, you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Courtney Shea. I live in Knox County at 3926 Beverly Place. I'm a member of Justice Knox, and if some of the other members could stand up or wave, wave your hands, I appreciate that. In the many school board meetings that I have listened to or attended, it's evident that we all share many of the same goals. Helping every Knox County student achieve their dreams by providing an education that will prepare them for the demands of the future. We share the, the goal of supporting our schools in their quest to prepare this next generation to take on the challenges. What are the obstacles to achieving those goals? It should be a priority of this board to have an equity policy that supports the work of identifying obstacles and developing resources and strategies to allow all students, students to succeed, to graduate, and to achieve their dreams. I had the opportunity to sit in on your annual workshop and to hear Ms. Satterfield's presentation on the role of the school board, which I heard as describing the board's clear role and responsibility to establish policy. And then a shared role with the superintendent on implementation. I also sat in on the presentation of Mr. Langlois regarding a strategy for achieving the benchmarks set forth in the Strategic Plan of Knox County Schools for increasing student achievement, eliminating disparities, and creating a positive culture. His presentation included a description of the reorganization of the DEO Task Force into the Alliance for Educational Equity. He described the Tennessee Plan set forth in the Tennessee Leaders for Equity Playbook and the seven commitments set forth in the Tennessee Plan, and he described a proposed definition of equity. If the school board is committed to equity, then it's the board's responsibility to reflect that in its policies. KCS staff and the new superintendent may need to strategize. They may need to work with the Alliance for Educational Equity to consider new, bringing in new resources, and to consider the perspective of the community. But each of these individuals and groups needs your guidance. This equity, each of these groups needs an equity policy that provides guidance, and we ask you to implement one.
Thank you. Next we'll have Claudia Caballero. You have, state your name and county of residence, you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Caballero, and I'm a Knox County resident. Thank you, school board, for everything you do. Thanks for everyone who's here tonight with their feelings and ideas and expressions. As some of you may know, I'm the CEO of Centro Hispano, where the Latino-serving organization in Knox County. Today I don't come here speaking only for the children and Latino community. I'd also like to share part of my personal story and why I believe so strongly that each child, meaningful for our, our children, our families, and our community. Five, it's same mother, same father, same environment, same rules. They wanted the same outcomes for all of us. They want us to be healthy and happy and financially independent. Our educational journeys, however, are very different. Both me and my sister that followed me went through school with undiagnosed ADHD. The sister after that didn't want to finish high school originally, but then went into an apprentice program after that. Another brother took two years to finish high, two extra years to finish high school and over a decade to finish college and is now serving in the Army here in the States and is in South Korea currently, and he found his passion. And then I have a younger brother who didn't finish high school and then went back to get his GED and now is a successful baker and business owner. And all of this to say that every one of us needed something different. In our school system, it doesn't matter what race, it doesn't matter what demographic, each one of our children needs something different. And I really would appreciate the consideration of that as we go forward. I think we can have as many labels as we want, we can disagree on a lot of different things. But when we think about the children that we're, we're serving in the school system and the outcomes we want to see, it's truly about what's best for each of them. And regardless of where that is, we want to meet them there, we want them to be happy and healthy. And we want them to be financially independent so that they can give back to our communities so that they can then hopefully someday take care of us when we need that. As I was reading the, the document that you didn't, you decided to push forward and discuss further, something that really spoke to me hit home was that Knox County School Board of Education recognizes that our students, staff, stakeholders bring their personal backgrounds and experiences to our school. The district embraces diversity and strives to assure that each student, regardless of race, ethnic background, and economic conditions, status, or other uniqueness, receives learning experiences that supports, that expands opportunities for growth, advancement, and higher levels of achievement. And I hope that as you move forward, you think of all those children and their unique stories. And I, yeah, thank you very much for your time and for having us here tonight. Gracias.
Next we'll have Ruby Vasquez. Ruby. And after Ruby, we'll have Rosa Mar. State your name correctly, because I know I didn't, and county of residence. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ruby Vasquez, Knox County School Resident. I graduated last spring from Fulton High School. I graduated last spring from Fulton High School, and I'm in my first year of, of college at Maryville College. I came to the United States at the age of eight. I did not know any English whatsoever. And some of the things that made it even more difficult was that I didn't know how the school system was, nor my parents, which made it even more difficult. And, but what made it even more was that I went to a predominantly white school with no one that looked like me or that spoke like me. And what helped me graduate, pushed me forward to continue my education, was the support system I had from mentors, counselors, and my family members. When you have a community, it's easier to overcome the things that make you feel scared. I felt scared. Every day I stepped into the school, I felt scared. And I think the, the, equity, sorry, I am nervous. Statement should be pushed because I don't want people like me to face what I faced. I think people like me shouldn't struggle like I did. Because when you struggle, the things that you want, the things that you dream of don't become. And when you have a community, you have a better environment. Thank you.
Next we'll have Rosa Mar. Next we'll have Megan Barlett. And after Megan, we'll have Lance McCold. You have three minutes and county of residence, three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Megan Barely Fogarty. I live in Knoxville, Knox County, Tennessee. Every day I work with Latino youth and families who are working hard to seek the best educational opportunities for themselves and their children. Education is often listed by those parents as their top priority. At the same time, it's often difficult for these parents to engage with their children's schools and teachers due to language barriers and cultural differences. When I started in my position five years ago, I spent a lot of my time convincing school administrators and teachers that the Latino population of students was growing, needed to be acknowledged and planned for. This year in 2022, Latino students make up nearly 12% of the student population in Knox County schools, and I have to spend a little less time convincing people that this is a population that we need to plan for. But while I've seen great strides in this time period, trying to meet some of the students and families, I'm very encouraged by the progress that we made. Six months ago, I was asked to be a part of the school culture team for the Alliance for Educational Equity, which grew out of the Disparities and Educational Task Force. I've greatly enjoyed working with the school culture team, including Director of School Culture Janice Cook, School Board Member Daniel Watson, other community members and parents who are passionate about improving the environment for all students in Knox County schools. It's truly been enjoyable and eye-opening to see the amazing programs and progress that we're making. However, all the excitement I have for the new programs, communication strategies, and crucially needed plans to diversify the staff and teachers of Knox County schools is being undermined by the reluctance of this body to lay a strong foundation and take a stance publicly for their authentic commitment to being a welcoming district for all students, families, and staff. Recently, Superintendent Bob Thomas sent an email to all Knox County's families, and he wrote, "The diversity of our school communities is one of the strengths of our district, and we will continue working to build a culture which celebrates that diversity and ensures all our staff, students, and families feel supported and empowered to succeed." Those are inspiring words, and I cannot tell you how much it means for me and my families that I serve to hear such a strong statement of support coming from our superintendent. It would be very meaningful indeed if the Board of Education also adopted an equity policy which demonstrates to our community that our leadership is a united front that stands in support of all our students. If the board is not to support this policy or kick it further down the road and not make real progress on it, it undermines not only the stated vision of our superintendent, but also the passionate work of all the Knox County staff and community members who have put in many hours of work on the equity teams and in these initiatives over the past eight years, as it's been stated. So I know the wording of the policy can be worked on, but please take a stance in moving this forward because it means a lot to our families.
Next we'll have Lance McCold. Please, please state your name, county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name's Lance McCold. I live in Knox County. I just, I, I just want to say a couple things. There's a lot of people who've said more, more articulate things than I can say. I do want the board to adopt a equity policy. There's many reasons for it, but I want to lift up the reason is because I want Ms. Henderson's daughter, who has dyslexia, to get all the help she needs. To me, this is what equity is about. To me, equity means that every child, wherever they are, we're going to do everything we can to help them. And, and I think that's what we should focus on. I think there's a lot of reluctance about, you know, what are the words? We need to see a statement that says, "We care about all the children," and we need, and we've got a commitment to do that. That's, I think, what's really the issue here. Yeah, go back and have a discussion about just exactly how you want to word it, but let's make it clear that that is what we're about, is we're, and we want to take care of every children, every child, to the best of our ability, including Board Member Henderson's children. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have Vivian Shike. Vivian Shike. All right, next we have Mary Terry. Mary Terry. State your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Mary McMillan Terry, and I reside in Knox County. A policy that states, this is who we are. I like that. I am the mom of a Black son and a White son. I tell them both every day that I value them, but my voice only goes so far. They have phenomenal teachers who tell them each day that they value them, but their voices only go so far too. But your voices, board members, your voices go much further. And I hope with your voices and your authority, you will approve this robust equity policy because it will reduce disproportionate expulsion rates, recruit and retain diverse teaching force, and embed cultural competence awareness in school practices. I advocate for this because there are many people listening to your voices right now. Students like my sons are listening, students of various racial and ethnic backgrounds and economic statuses. They are listening and hoping your voices affirm their presence in KCS. New teachers are listening too, new teachers who are looking for school systems to teach in. Some teachers who look like my oldest son, and for a Black son to have a Black teacher before the third grade, that representation, that diversification in leadership increases that child's chances to enroll in college by 13%. And if my son has two Black teachers before third grade, it increases his chances of enrolling in college by 32%. That's phenomenal. Teachers who look like my sons will hear your voices affirm this policy, and they will know who you are proud to teach and employ. And you know who else will hear it? Students who look like my youngest son. You have the opportunity to teach them what affirming differences in uniqueness looks like. When you approve this equity statement, those students will know, because they're already seeing in their schools, and we're going to get to that in one minute, that all cultures and languages and races are welcome in Knox County. Finally, it's my faith that brings me here. I recognize that everyone doesn't have a particular faith, but I wondered whether we can all agree that all people have inherent value and that sometimes we fail to convey that as disproportionate suspension and expulsion rates prove in Knox County. This inequity reminds me of another inequity in the Book of Acts. When the apostles recognized that there was suffering because of inequitable, inequitable treatment, they listened. They recognized their responsibility, and they changed the leadership and to reduce the suffering. Right now, School Culture Department is doing excellent work in Knox County, and I hope that you will affirm that by validating a policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Amy Fig. Amy Fig. All right, next we have Michael O'Malley. Michael, you have three minutes. State your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thanks. I'm Michael O'Malley, Knox County. That's my county of residence. So I came here talking, to talk about the equity policy like, you know, everybody else. But since it seems like you guys are interested in moving that back to policy review, I'm kind of throwing out my notes here and going impromptu, so I hope that's not a bad idea. I don't really have a problem with refining the policy. That sounds like a good idea if people think that it truly needs refining. However, I do have concerns that that is actually a request made in good faith, and for these reasons. One of the board members tonight objected to the current policy based on language that's no longer in the policy. Another of the board members indicated that they would not vote for the policy no matter what because they didn't think it was necessary. Another board member indicated that they felt bullied by public input over email regarding this policy, which seems odd of an elected official. Several others seem to indicate that they haven't kept up with what the Disparities in Educational Task Force has to say about this issue since they've been working for years and filled in quite a bit of the gaps in knowledge that people were objecting to right now. And that was the board's own task force, right? Or at least the district's. It just doesn't seem like people on this board have truly done the reading, truly wanted to engage with this policy because they should have known the answers to the questions that they were asking to delay it to policy review. Perhaps I'm wrong, and we'll see a wonderful policy review discussion. I really hope to see that. But I will also point out, the last policy review wasn't actually recorded, so it's really difficult for the public to actually decide if there was good faith engagement with the policy if something like that happens again. I've seen this happen before with policies where, under technicalities, policies are kicked forward in time. And again, procedural safeguards are good, but sometimes it really does feel like obstruction under just the guise of diplomacy. One thing that worries me that people said multiple times in this discussion is that this policy could perhaps lead to more questions or things decided in courts of law. And I say that, like, if we made a policy that says that it strives to assure that each student, regardless of racial or ethnic background or economic status or other uniqueness, receive learning experiences and support that expands opportunities for growth, advancement, and high levels of achievement, if that policy causes our district to have lawsuits or causes further questions about how we do things in Knox County, that seems to indicate that there are problems in Knox County that need to be addressed because those things, making sure that students have, students of economic disadvantage or students of different racial or ethnic backgrounds, get equal and equitable education access and opportunities, I think we would all like to say that that's uncontroversial, and I really hope that that is.
Next we'll have Susan Dalton. Susan Dalton. And after Susan, we'll have Todd Shelton. State your name and county residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Susan Dalton, and I am a resident of Knox County. I stand before you as an educator who previously taught in Knox County schools and now works in a community service organization in the heart of Knoxville, serving inner-city students. I'll never forget the day that an eighth-grade student stood on the other side of my desk with tears in her eyes, asking me the question, "Why does everyone hate me because of where I come from?" You see, she was an Iraqi refugee who had only been in the country just a few months, and everyone had spent time picking on her because of what she wore and where she was born and less time getting to know who she was. I didn't have answers to those questions. Some questions may just not have answers. But what I could tell her is with 100% confidence that I supported her for who she was, what she brought, and everything that she was going to become. And as her teacher, I was going to stand behind her 100% along the way as she learned that for herself and she educated others in that as well. To me, this equity of education policy does the exact same thing. But instead of it coming from the words of her teacher, it is now coming from the words of the governing board of the school district itself. You see, often, we hear in education, someone has already mentioned that "all means all." But I can tell you from my experiences that is not always the case. Students need to know that they all bring value because of who they are and where they come from. And that all students need the complete support around them to ensure that they have every opportunity to learn, grow, and succeed during their time in Knox County schools, but beyond that as well. All students deserve to know that you, as the governing board of our school district, support them and all that they have, both now and to come. Over the years, many initiatives have been set into place, but there is nothing that's centrally been documented to ensure that there is protection and provision for all students, especially those in minority status. This equity policy does just that. Passing this policy is a step in helping to show that it is true in Knox County that "all really does mean all." It sets a measure of accountability in place to ensure all students, regardless of any factor, are receiving the same opportunities afforded to everyone. It is my sincere hope that you recognize and agree with the seven outcomes in this policy to eliminate disparities. The only way to accomplish these goals is a commitment to utilize resources across the district in a way to support the needs of the diverse students and communities that exist. This commitment must go beyond verbal discussions and committee meetings and be identified through policies and procedures that directly support that. The equity in education policy needs to become the pillar and standard by which "all really does mean all." Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have Todd Shelton. Todd Shelton. And after Todd, we'll have Kerian.
Don't start yet.
Todd, you've got three minutes.
You'll have one, yeah. Todd Shelton from South Knox County. Christie's my board rep. I think it is a very good thing that the superintendent suggested current strategic plan. We just do not have a policy naming it. Our Tennessee Department of Education partnered with other groups to produce the Tennessee Equity Leaders' Playbook in 2018. This C260 equity, policy of equity is consistent with our state publication. I understand that there are some folks who do not favor such a policy, and I think it's that they do not realize that it is meant and applies to every student in Knox County schools. There's equality and there is equity. Equality means that each individual or group of people is given the same resources or opportunities. Equity recognizes that each person has different circumstances and works to allocate resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. It doesn't refer to people by race, gender, culture, IQ, special needs, income brackets. It is because this policy is meant for the whole spectrum of kids. It seems to me that if people in our county understood the meaning of equity, that all the families and students could feel a little more, some degree of comfort, knowing that their child is going to be approached in a positive way and to accomplish the child's goals. I've heard that some people think that we should wait on this until the new superintendent comes. That's a sad thought. This is the Board of Directors. We've been working on equity for years. We need a policy. The board decision comes from board members after hearing from their district residents in Knox County. The new superintendent will then have to follow those policies. More and more school systems have recognized the need to speak about equity and to implement policies. The KCS system has taken on equity more and more, and the board needs to make a policy and statement that gives teachers and staff guidance. We need to know from the board when they are going to make a decision. Thank you.
All right, next we'll have Kerian Darko. You have, state your county residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Hey, my name's Kiran Darko. I live in that West. I'm on the football team and an IB full diploma candidate. And I'm also active in Scout Troop 147 and a National Achiever Society scholar here at the Knoxville Area Urban League. Although I've been involved with a lot of different programs at West, one of the most meaningful has been during the last year when I've been attending the POC Club led by the amazing Ms. Johnson. Shout out Ms. Johnson. POC officially stands for People of Change, and we've done lots of volunteer work at places like Calm. But it's also specifically a place for students of color to feel like they have a place where they can be themselves in an environment that can often feel alienating. Even though West is relatively diverse compared to the rest of Knox County, I am one of only about two or three students of color, period, in all of my honors and IB classes. A lot of time, this can feel really isolating to me as a minority student. I feel like if the school board can adopt an equity policy, this would make a commitment to encourage more underrepresented students like me to take higher-level classes that will better prepare them for their futures. I hope that me sharing my story helps you all to understand how this policy can be very meaningful for thousands of current and future high school students in this district. Thank you for listening.
All right, Madam Chair, that concludes public forum. Moving to board forum, Mr. Jim.
I guess the only thing I'd like to say, just for students, as we began through the semester and started getting through here, just, you know, as always, finish strong, stay focused on your education. It really is there to help you and to your future. So just keep on working hard through that and seek any help that you need.
Ms. Ellen. Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to encourage the public as we debated some tonight about our superintendent search and where we are in that process, to remember that there is a page on our website. I think it's knoxschools.org/supersearch or something like that. So if you want to keep up to date with that and the progress, make sure that you're doing that. And also, I want to thank the public for coming out and sticking with us for a really long meeting.
Ms. Scab.
Yeah, I'd like to say, I mean, we're all about academics, but I got to go to Signing Day at West High School last week, and I know it took place at a lot of the other high schools, which I know is so fun for so many of these families and kids that have worked really hard. And a lot of times, signing to go to a school is allowing them to go to a college in a way they wouldn't be able to otherwise. So it was fun to be a part of that.
Agreed. Ms. Horn. Ms. Henderson. Ms. Bounds. Mr. McMillan. Ms. Satter.
Yeah, I just want to publicly shout out Russ Oaks for doing an amazing job representing and getting what Austin needs, Magna High School needs for all the things that's been going on recently. So thank you for you and your team for making it a priority. I appreciate you.
So that concludes board forum. Meeting adjourned.